The Planning Commission meeting of November 13th, 2017 will now come to order. And Laura, if you could call a roll.
We don't do that.
Is that the next? No?
We don't do that.
We don't usually do that at the time.
One second.
Here.
Commissioner Mayby?
Here.
Commissioner Henkin is excused. Commissioner Espy?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney is excused. Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Chairman McGriff?
Present.
Okay. She's being patched in electronically and she's going to be speaking out of that speaker this evening. So I would like to, before we get started on any of the items this evening, I would like to find out if there are any public comments that anybody would like to bring forward to the commission tonight.
That are not on the agenda.
That are not on the agenda. Hearing none. We will move to the first item. CP 17002, DP 17003, NR 17004, the Abernathy Place Hotel and Mixed-Use Development. Okay. Okay, so before we get started, then I would like to have Carrie Richter discuss some of the rules and regulations about public hearings.
Okay, so this matter is before the Planning Commission for the adoption of findings. So this isn't a public hearing. This is just your review of findings consistent with your deliberation at the last hearing. And then staff is happy to answer your questions. We've got a couple of proposed amendments that have to do with some wordsmithing. We've identified a couple of typos that need correction that Mr. Walter is going to go through. But before we get to that, I just need to make sure that since the last hearing, has any commissioner had any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or other statement to declare?
None.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walter.
Thank you.
Wait, wait.
Oh, sorry Denise.
I was at a recent meeting with both the applicant, Mr. Ballard, and Mr. Foley, and Mr. Nacita.
That was the M&amp;A meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I was present at the meeting, but I left the room prior to the discussion, so I don't know what happened inside.
Was this matter discussed?
There was a, the meeting was to determine whether or not there would be, the substantive amount, substance of the project was not discussed, but there was a vote by the Neighborhood Association, which I facilitated, but I did not participate in the discussion at all.
Does anybody in the audience wish to question Commissioner Chairman McGriff about these, this meeting? I'm seeing none.
Task of clarification.
Sure.
We're not voting on anything tonight, right?
Yes.
We are just voting on the.
You're voting on the findings.
So any impact that she would have had, just so I understand the process, any impact she would have had by talking to somebody, would that have impacted the findings?
It depends on what the discussion was about.
I see.
And what she's telling me is that the discussion was, it didn't impact the findings.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Go ahead Pete.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight, we're considering the final findings for approval of planning files, CP 1702, DP 1703, and NR 1704, with amended conditions. On October 23rd, 2017, the Planning Commission made a tentative decision to approve the application. What we've done tonight is prepare the final findings and conditions of approval based on your direction. Record is closed and no further public testimony will be accepted. This is an application for approval of a general development plan and detailed development plan in two phases located at the intersection of 17th Street and Washington Street. First phase is for the hotel, which is five stories. They've requested several adjustments to the development code, which we've discussed and placed in the record. Phase two consists of a mixed-use development with apartments, retail, and coffee shop. And this proposal includes the preservation and retention of the Hackett House, which is a designated historic landmark. The application requested six adjustments to the development code pursuant to our master plan code, Oregon City Municipal Code 1765. Attached to this report, along with the final findings and conditions of approval, is the entire record prepared for this, which is very long, as you know. I'm just going to point out, as we've mentioned, there are some typos and errors in the staff report I wanted to bring your attention to. The first one was brought up to our attention by Commissioner McGriff. Any references to the Two Rivers Homeowners Association should be amended to read Two Rivers Neighborhood Association. There is four references in the staff report to that on pages three and seven. Okay. So that's an easy fix. The second, the second item, and these are in no particular order, the condition of approval, number 45, which relates to the pedestrian and bicycle access between the train station and 17th Street, should have included the word bicycle in the conditions. So we're recommending that the Planning Commission accept that rec, that change. The condition of approval was worded correctly in the findings, but it wasn't worded the same way in the conditions of approval. A copy of the amended conditions of approval is before you. And you can see in red, next to number 45, condition of approval, where that change would be made. Right. And you're also adding 17th Street? Yes. And 17th Street was in the original staff report. So that's at the end of that. Third typo, thank you Vern, refers to highways 217 on page 11. It should be highway 213. And the final one, which will probably require a little discussion, is with respect to the acceptance of the end of the Oregon Trail master plan. In our findings on pages, actually, let me find that. I've got it up on the screen here.
While you're going through that, I think it actually should be highway 205, not 213 or 217. It should be 205.
Oh, 205. Right next to the. Yeah. Okay. Sorry. Okay. Bottom of page eight in the findings. So just to recap, in the record, there is a resolution placed in the record by James Nacita, Resolution 9092, which was adopted by the City Commission on December 19th, 1990. And it accepted the end of the Oregon Trail master plan. And it directed the Planning Commission to consider adopting or incorporating the EOT, End of the Oregon Trail Master Plan, into the city comprehensive plan. That latter directive was never concluded, as far as we've determined. So the end of the Oregon Trail master plan, in staff's opinion, was never adopted into the comprehensive plan as a land use guiding document. And it wasn't adopted by ordinance as well. It was adopted by resolution. So that is the. Yeah, that's usually a two-step process where you have a plan adopted by, or accepted by resolution, and then if it, and then it gets tweaked a little bit. So I'm open to discussion about this. Denise brought this up, so, but I do think it's fairly clear based on the record that that was not adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. With that being said, the minutes from that 1990 meeting and the resolution itself, and the staff report that explains the resolution are part of the record. They were placed in the record by James Nacita. And therefore, we would amend the staff report at the bottom of page eight to reflect that although these minutes and staff report and the resolution itself are placed in the record, they do not provide evidence that the end of the Oregon Trail master plan was adopted as part of the comprehensive plan.
Pete?
Yes.
Good question. So it was a resolution, but it was never voted on, and that's why it's not in the?
Well, it was voted on at the City Commission level as a resolution to accept the master plan. But it has a specific recommendation to direct the Planning Commission to consider the adoption process to make it a part of the city comprehensive.
Back in 1990?
Back in 1990.
And that never occurred?
And that never occurred. Yeah.
So basically, the city said, "Thank you for all the great work you did in this master plan. We should look about, we should, we should look towards adopting it." And then it just?
Correct.
Okay.
And if you look back through the record, there was the adoption of the tourist commercial zone, there was adoption of a comprehensive plan, periodic review process that led to the current mixed-use downtown zone, and a lot of goals and policies related to the end of the Oregon Trail. But no specific adoption of the end of the Oregon Trail master plan as an ancillary document or a guiding land use document. Okay? Yep. With those revisions to the findings, staff would recommend approval with amended conditions of the files.
I would so move.
Do we hear a second?
Well, I have additional corrections, so.
Well, but you need to wait for the second.
I seconded it.
We got a second, so now we can discuss. Yes?
Okay. Mr. Mayby?
Okay. Couple things. First, when you go over the issues, starting basically with page seven, additional issues.
Where are we on here, so we can follow?
Final findings and adoption. So you start off with saying, "A citizen contends," and then you conclude with, "So we don't, we deny Mr. Nacita." So if you, you should either say, "Mr. Nacita contends, blah, blah, blah," or therefore, you know, and strike his name from the end. I think it should just be, "A contention was raised, blah, 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 blah," and then the Planning Commission denies the contentions on this issue, and just strike Mr. Nacita's name from that, and just leave it generic. And it happens like two or three times where it's kind of consistent.
Okay.
Because in some cases, like the next one says, "We heard from numerous citizens, blah, blah, blah," and then at the end you say, "We deny Mr. Nacita's contention." So again, it's multiple people, so just, we deny the contentions.
Yes.
And then on page 10, the very last sentence, we're all scrolling furiously as you see. It says, "Further, the orientation and design of the hotel will protect the Hackett House and end of the Oregon Trail site." That makes it sound like it's a physical thing. I think we need, it should say, "Will protect the integrity of the Hackett House and end of the Oregon Trail site." Because it's not a physical barrier, it's an, I don't know, intellectual barrier? Yes. Cultural, I don't know, but it's not physical. It reads like it's a physical thing.
Yeah.
And.
You could use the words compatibility maybe? I don't know.
Yeah. I think we just said the integrity, protect the integrity of the Hackett House and end of the Oregon Trail site.
Sounds good.
Say that.
I would concur with Commissioner Mayby on that.
Okay. And that's it? The others have been raised, so? So we just have the, you got them all figured out, Pete?
Yes. We got those down. Thank you. Okay, so can we have an amended motion then to adopt the findings with corrections?
Denise, did you want to do that?
Well, no, the original?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's fine. With including all of Commissioner Mayby's amendments.
Okay.
And I second that.
Okay. And Commissioner Guile seconds it? And we can vote?
Right.
And Chairman McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right. Thanks Denise. Bye.
Thanks Denise for hanging up the phone.
Okay.
For hanging up on you, Dad.
We're hanging up on you.
All right, ready to move on to the next matter?
Right. Okay, so agenda item 3C, or 3B, I mean. It's the general development master plan amendment and detailed development plan to allow a temporary modular building at 256 Warner Milne Road. And these are planning files CP 17003 and DP 17001. And I have a couple of speakers for this item. I have.
Okay, before we go, this is speaker, you have got to be my one that's under the disclosure disclosure.
That's right.
And we got.
Correct. We are at public hearing.
Assistant Planner Vosaleva here for her first staff report, so I'm very excited to welcome her to the trenches.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
One public hearing on a land use application is scheduled for tonight. A staff report for preparing for this application has been made available, is public seven days before, before the first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The presidential hearing procedure the Planning Commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. Hearing procedure steps are shown in the chart over here. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those identified in the staff report, please identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on this application. Any written materials mailed to the city staff during the time period when the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of this hearing is closed. The Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree. Any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised with the consideration of the City Commission. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence, if the city and all parties must can respond, the issue will not be judged appealable to the state Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its destiny to respond to the issue, includes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Now we will open the record for PC 17-135. Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare? Has any commissioner visited the site?
No. I've been by the site.
I've been by the site. Yeah. On a daily basis, pretty much.
I've been around the front of the site, but not in the back where the proposed building is, but I'm familiar with the layout.
Same.
Anyone in the audience wish to question the commissioners about their site visits? Seeing none.
Okay.
We'll turn it over to the.
Let's begin with this, yeah.
Thank you. So this is planning files CP 1703 and DP 1701, a master plan amendment and detailed development plan for, to allow temporary buildings within the red soils master plan area. So the red soils master plan is generally located at Warner Milne and Beaver Creek Road. The site is approximately 68 acres in size and is known mixed use employment. Most of the Clackamas County offices and county services are located here, as well as the Clackamas County Jail. A master plan for this area was approved in 2005 and full build-out is projected for 2030. The master plan does reside, or the master plan area resides within the natural resource overlay district due to a couple of wetlands on site. There is the Mud Creek wetland in the southwest corner, and the Noel Creek wetland in the northeast corner of the site. Also within the master plan area is the property at 256 Warner Milne. So it's located in the northeastern corner of the site and includes the Shaver Building, which is currently utilized by a Safe Place Family Justice Center, which is a public and nonprofit partnership providing a variety of services to victims of domestic violence and other violent crimes, including assistance with crime reporting, filing restraining orders, legal services and canceling services. And the goal of a Safe Place, or they strive to provide these services in a single location to avoid someone who may have just been through a traumatic experience having to go to multiple different locations to access these types of resources. So Safe Place recently received a grant for additional staff for the next three to five years. The Shaver Building is currently at capacity and can't accommodate any more staff. And again, one of the main goals of a Safe Place is to provide all these services in a single location, so these staff members also couldn't be located off-site. So in order to accommodate these temporary employees, the applicant has requested a temporary modular building to remain on-site for up to five years. The building would be approximately 1,400 square feet in size. It would be located completely behind the Shaver Building, and it would result in a loss of eight to 10 parking stalls and would be removed after a period of five years. And this is just a photo of the building, so just kind of a standard modular building. So the existing master plan does allow for temporary buildings. This is an excerpt from the master plan. So it identifies that temporary buildings are allowed to accommodate peak period staffing or other factors, and that these structures have to be located behind existing buildings within the master plan. But it doesn't define temporary buildings or establish any other guidelines for temporary buildings. So the applicant is proposing to amend the master plan in order to define temporary buildings as structures that will remain on-site for no more than five years, and to establish some parameters for temporary buildings, including exemptions from some standards of our code through the master plan adjustment process. So this is the list of code criteria that the applicant has requested adjustments from, and a couple of additional standards that staff is recommending adjustments for. And we've taken this list and grouped it into three different adjustments. So adjustment one is for maximum front yard setbacks and building and entranceway orientation. Adjustment two is for site design standards. Adjustment three is for building design standards. And staff is recommending that only adjustment one is incorporated into the master plan, meaning that will apply to the currently proposed building, as well as any future temporary buildings where adjustments, whereas adjustments two and three would only apply to the currently proposed building. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. So the approval criteria for adjustments through, to development standards through the master plan process is listed here. Staff's findings are that the applicant is in compliance with this criteria. We have recommended some conditions of approval pertaining to mitigation associated with the adjustments, which is subsection four here. So I'll be focusing mostly on those recommendations for mitigation. So adjustment one is for front yard setbacks and building and entrance orientation. So we have a lot of standards in our code that require that buildings are located near the street and that the most architecturally significant facade and primary entranceway also faces towards the street. The purpose of these standards is to provide interaction between buildings and the public street and create aesthetically pleasing pedestrian-friendly streets. However, in the case of temporary buildings, these would likely be modular structures or more utilitarian, less architecturally interesting buildings, so they would actually diminish the streetscape and kind of do the opposite of what the standards intend. So right now, there's some, so staff is recommending that this adjustment is incorporated into the master plan and would apply to all future temporary buildings within the master plan area. And right now, there's some conflicting requirements because the master plan requires that building, that temporary buildings are located behind existing buildings, whereas our code requires that all buildings are located close to the street. So by incorporating this adjustment into the master plan, it would provide for some consistency between what's in our code and the master plan, and we could eliminate those conflicting requirements. No mitigation was proposed by the applicant for this adjustment, and in this case, staff agrees. The reason being is that the requirement to locate temporary buildings behind existing buildings is already in the master plan, effectively exempting temporary buildings from these standards, but the master plan is just very vague and doesn't make that clear. So by incorporating the adjustment to the master plan, we wouldn't necessarily be granting any additional allowances for temporary buildings. We would just be clarifying what already is in the master plan, which is the requirement to have temporary buildings behind existing structures. Adjustment two is for site design, so it includes exemptions from pedestrian circulation standards and parking lot landscaping standards. The purpose of pedestrian circulation requirements is to provide pedestrian connectivity and safe pedestrian-friendly parking lots and sites. For this proposed modular building, it would not be open to the public. It would only be accessible to staff members working in the building. And on top of that, due to the sensitive nature of some of the work that a Safe Place does, anyone entering the building has to go through a screening process, so they are required to enter through the main entrance of the Shaver Building and undergo a check-in process before they're authorized to enter the rest of the building. So providing a pedestrian connection to the temporary modular building may create some confusion about where to enter and potentially jeopardize the safety of staff members or visitors of a Safe Place. So the applicant is requesting an adjustment to the standard. Staff is recommending that the adjustment is not incorporated into the master plan because this building is not accessible to the public, but future temporary buildings within the master plan may be open to the public. So in those situations, we would want those pedestrian connections. And staff is recommending mitigation for this adjustment in the form of a temporary bollard near the entrance of the building to ensure the safety of staff coming in and out of the building, and to differentiate between parking areas and the areas where staff would be entering the building and walking around. Adjustment two also includes exemption from some parking lot landscaping standards. The stated purpose of parking. The stated purpose of parking lot landscaping in our code is to limit the visual impact and soften appearance of parking lots, shade parking areas, and make parking lots more inviting to pedestrians. Under our code, we would require landscaping in the areas shown here, so in front of the building and behind the building. Since this is a temporary building, it's impracticable to require permanent landscaping in these locations, because within five years, the building would be removed and the parking lot would revert back to its current conditions. We did consider requiring temporary landscaping, but thought it would be more beneficial to provide permanent landscaping in other areas of the parking lot. So, staff is recommending additional landscaping at the perimeter of the property, along the western property line south of the Shaver Building, and along the southern property line. This additional landscaping would be in compliance with the purpose of parking lot landscaping standards, and also provide some additional screening. And Adjustment Number Three is for building design. It includes exemptions from these code sections, including variation in massing, transparency standards, as well as some screening standards for mechanical equipment. And again, this is a photo of the proposed building, so generally, a modular building wouldn't meet many of these design standards in our code. The purpose of these standards is to provide for architectural interest in visually appealing building designs. Again, this specific building would not be open to the public. It would be screened as much as possible, and it would be temporary. So, standards that provide for more visually appealing building design aren't as essential as they would be for a permanent building that is located in a prominent location. And again, we're recommending that this adjustment is not incorporated into the master plan and would apply only to the currently proposed building. In the event that future temporary buildings are accessed by the public, we may want them to comply with some of these standards. Staff is recommending additional landscaping as mitigation, so it's the same mitigation as what was required for the, or what was recommended for the site design adjustments. So, again, landscaping along the western and southern property line. And to give you an idea of the existing screening, I've provided some photos just for context. So, this is taken from the parking lot of the Shaver Building, looking to the west. So, there's a side obscuring fence and some mature vegetation, but some gaps in the vegetation and opportunity for additional screening. This is looking south, so this area is kind of the most lacking in landscaping. And staff would be recommending additional landscaping along the fence line here. This is looking from Beaver Creek Road towards the Shaver Building, and the red arrow indicates where the proposed modular building would be placed. So, again, it is somewhat visible, so staff is recommending landscaping along the fence line. And this is kind of just another angle that shows the fence has slats in it, so kind of depending on the angle, you can see through those slats. So, that's the reason for additional landscaping recommended there. And then, this angle is from Beaver Creek Road, looking north towards the Shaver Building. And this is, again, where the site is most lacking in landscaping, and staff is recommending additional trees and shrubs in this area to provide for additional screening. And lastly, the applicant has proposed plywood siding, which is a prohibited building material. Our code doesn't allow for adjustments to standards that are specifically prohibited through the master plan process. So, this is being processed as a modification through the Site Plan and Design Review Process, and this is the criteria for modifications. Because the structure is temporary, not open to the public, screened as much as possible, and because the impacts of the structure would be temporary, whereas the trees being planted as mitigation would provide a permanent benefit, staff has determined that the criteria for modifications through the Site Plan and Design Review Process is met, and we are recommending approval of planning files CP 1703 and DP 1701, as conditioned in the staff report.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions of staff?
I was trying to see you. I had that up instead of the actual file. Is there any direct connection between the main building and that building secure if we're moving people back and forth, or is that only for staff there, and you're not going to be interviewing or helping people in the modular building?
I'll let the applicant fill in, but my understanding is that that modular building would only be for staff, and visitors would not be in the modular building.
I was wondering about secure access coming out of the, because I saw where you come out of the other building, and I wonder if they have to walk out in the weather and into the other building. That was number one, and number two was emergency exits coming out of that modular building. It's come up before that, in case anything happens at the front, is there a way out the back?
Those are covered by a building code, not in our purview.
Okay.
I'm sure the building department will make sure that we have those kinds of things happening for them.
I understand the addition does not have restroom facilities in it. You depend on going back to the main building for that, so it's a simplification of installation.
Just always interested.
Correct, yeah. There would be no restroom facilities and no utility connections. It wouldn't be connected to sewer or water.
But electricity.
But electricity, yes.
Which is a utility.
All right. So, Commissioner Mayby.
I'm just curious what, I was looking at the pictures of the proposed building, what the purpose of the bollard would be if they're going to be entering and exiting the building from a raised ramp. It's not like a car's going to pull underneath, well, yeah, okay, a car might pull underneath the ramp, but, you know, I'm just not sure what the purpose of that really is based on your.
Yeah, we would just want to make sure that there aren't any cars pulling up, kind of blocking where staff members would be entering or exiting the building.
But, well, just looking at the pictures in their proposal, it's, let's see if we've got a picture of it.
There was a site plan with the bollard, I think, identified.
Yeah, but as you can see, there's, in that picture, the door is above ground level, so there's going to be a ramp leading up to it. So, there won't be somebody able to pull up to the door and park in front of it, or drive, you know, accidentally drive in front of the building, and, you know, so I'm not sure of the actual need of a bollard when there's going to be a ramp. And the pictures they have in their, in the applicant, application, show a fairly significant, you know, ADA-compliant metal ramp going up to the door, that basically is the whole, almost the whole length of the, so I'm not sure what the purpose of the bollard would really serve.
Yeah, I mean, that was the mitigation that we're recommending, because that they, because they don't meet some of those pedestrian circulation requirements that require connections between buildings. But if the Planning Commission determines that it's not necessary, then we don't have to include it.
One thing that I would say is that, if, can you go back to the site plan? I mean, there is a parking space right next door, and we don't have, we do know that there is that big metal thing, rampy thing, to get you up to where it is. I'm not sure exactly where it falls on the site plan, so there could be a gap there, rather than, again, our code requires that there be no empty space, right? It's got to be landscaping or used for something. So, rather than have like this space and a half-wide area in particular, if you have pedestrians maybe park and kind of hang out in front of the stairs or something like that, it's just a temporary measure to ensure that there's pedestrian safety and some delineation between the parking.
Okay, but rather than a bollard would, I don't know what they're called, this stupid cement barricades that they have on the highway, could they just?
Jersey barrier?
Yeah, jersey barriers. I couldn't remember. Oh, it's East Coasters. You know, couldn't they have just, couldn't they just put that down beside that last parking spot, which would also separate the ramp, the parking spot, and all that, as opposed to a bollard?
Sure, yeah. Staff's recommendation was a bollard, just because it's a bit more sturdy, but whatever the Planning Commission chooses, we do have a lot of bollards around.
Particularly, it was just an idea of there's a discreet physical separation between the parking and the walking.
Yeah, because normally, we would have that five-foot landscape strip, just to provide some safety for pedestrians.
All right. Verne?
Fine.
Are you good? Okay. The only thing that I would suggest is if the HVAC is going to be on top of, they're usually on the side, on one side or the other, but sometimes they can be on the top, and it would be nice to have screening on top of that, since it will be visible from the street. And then, I was just wondering if there was going to be skirting on the bottom of it, and if there was going to be adequate lighting back there in that corner.
So, your first question about the mechanical equipment, the applicant indicated that the equipment would be placed on, would be wall-mounted equipment on the front of the side of the building.
That's usually where you see them, yeah.
And then, we are requiring, so the applicant isn't proposing any changes to lighting, but we have some standards for lighting levels at building entrances and walkways. So, we are requiring that the applicant submit a photometric plan to show compliance with those standards.
Yeah, I mean, would it kill the budget if, you know, you were to, if you had the bollard? Maybe that could be a light-up bollard or something like that, with, you know, just create a little halo of light in that location on nights, you know, the darker evenings, but.
Yeah, as long as they meet those minimum lighting requirements at the entrance, that would be fine.
Do you have one quick question about the landscaping that you're proposing? And you can leave that up. Could they, since it's county land on the other side of the fence, could they plant those trees in mitigation on the other side of the fence? Because my thought is, this is, you know, this is a high sensitivity safety area, and so planting bushes and shrubs inside the parking lot area where somebody could potentially be hiding versus on the other side of the fence, because the objective is to screen the fence from the common person walking down the street versus the people in the parking lot. I mean, so.
Yeah, they can utilize either side of the property line, since both properties are county property.
That would be, okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have a couple of public speakers, and I think the next, right, we would have the applicant come up, and do they have a presentation?
Yeah, they do.
Great, all right.
Oh, and feel free to bend that microphone a little bit toward you there.
Are you, are you doing the, I thought there was a clicker up there.
You just do it like the old film strips and say, boop.
Next slide, please, next slide.
Is it clipped to the next one? There's actually two.
All of us gray hairs understood the boop.
Yeah, yeah.
Kids nowadays don't know what I'm talking about when they do that. These kids nowadays.
Can they just borrow the mouse?
Oh, has it, a laser? So, I, so, so I should be, I think I might have to do the boop.
Maybe not.
Oh, I have the mouse.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, boy, it's really touchy.
That's okay.
All right, ready? Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lindsay Nesbit, and I'm the Planning Manager for Clackamas County. I'm joined today by Melissa Earlbaum, who's the Executive Director of a Safe Place. Also with us, that helped us, so we put together the land use application for a Safe Place. Also in the audience, I'd like to point out Mike McAllister, who's the Planning Director for Clackamas County, who assisted with the application as well, and Angie Brandonberg, who is a Lieutenant with the Sheriff's Office and very much involved with the Safe Place as well. So, that's our team here this evening. So, I'm a, I've been a land use planner for a number of years, so my PowerPoint presentation is quite similar to Deliana's presentation, so it's a little bit repetitive, so I'll try to quickly go through some of those items as well. So, just quickly about a Safe Place is they provide services to victims and their children who are fleeing domestic violence, sexual violence, sexual abuse, elder abuse, and stalking. A Safe Place provides a number of services, as Deliana said, under one roof, and this is, this is a critical model for people trying to seek assistance from abuse, because by limiting the number of stops that people have to go to, that drastically increases their success for getting through the program and getting through the system and getting assistance that they need. If, you know, if folks don't necessarily have a vehicle to get from place to place, or if they don't have childcare, or they have to leave their work, and if they have to go to five, 10 different stops just to seek assistance, it's a, it's a very difficult process, and some people become frustrated, upset, and just give up. So, just some of the many, many services offered at a Safe Place include safety planning, filing court and protective orders, accessing emergency shelters, legal services, food resources, housing, counseling, and they provide daycare on-site. Another issue with going to site to site to site and having to see numerous people, each time they have to repeat their story, and they're revictimised, and going through their tragedy and reliving their trauma all over again. And if they have children with them, the children often are hearing that story over and over again. So, having these facilities in one location is just a very beneficial business model. And then, also too, a really neat feature that they provide is they recently have a video court system, so folks don't have to go down to the court, and that creates an additional, like, level of safety and security for those folks. So, the statistics show, these are a little bit old, but since they implemented this model of, you know, like a one place to come, they assisted with 274 protective court orders. They received 3,700 visits in 2015, which was a 21% increase in services. So, it's working. So, this is just a floor plan of the existing Shaver Building. As you can see, they are at capacity. They recently received a grant to, to increase their staff, and looking at the floor plan, there just really is not any room in the existing facility. And it's crucial that these folks be on-site. They're on a very secure server, they're very integrated with one another, and so just having them on-site is crucial for the business model and crucial for the, for the employees and the interactions. To answer your question, this modular office will only be utilized by staff members associated with a Safe Place. It will not be utilized by the public at all. The staff members in the trailer will be coming in, or the modular office will be coming into the main facility to assist. So, here's the site plan, very similar to the one you've seen already. As you know, the modular office is going to go in the south side of the property behind the existing building, and just off of the property line. The reason for that location is just off of the property line, what's that?
It fits.
It fits, but also, building codes require a little bit of a setback, and by moving that building closer in line with the existing building, it provides a better screening from Warner Milne. So, here are some photographs from Warner Milne, looking at the site. As you can see, there's a very large arborvitae hedge in the existing building providing screening, and then the hedge in the bottom right of the screen is taken from the adjacent property, the bank, the credit union, showing how the site is screened with the hedge. And then, similar to the pictures you already saw, here are some photos of the existing side obscuring fence and the existing mature landscaping in the rear of the property. So, again, the Red Soils Master Plan does allow for a location, temporary location of buildings. And then, I also just want to point out the very last sentence. This will be pertinent a little bit later in the presentation, which says, "When located between a building and a non-county owner property, they shall be screened with fencing and only fencing." So, when it's located between a non-county property and the county property, only fencing is required for screening. So, so, as previously stated, the intent is to have temporary buildings located behind the existing structure, because temporary buildings typically are rented, they're not stick-built, and so they don't typically meet all of the design standards and elements that are required in the Oregon City Municipal Code. So, to help screen and mitigate that, they're required to be located behind existing buildings. And so, we're very excited about the recommendation of adding this into the master plan to help reduce that direct conflict with the code, and to help make it a little bit easier to cite temporary buildings in the Red Soils, in the Red Soils campus. and to help make it a little bit easier to cite temporary buildings in the Red Soils, in the Red Soils campus. It's also a little bit difficult because the Oregon City Municipal Code doesn't typically allow temporary buildings. There aren't provisions for that, but our master plan does allow an avenue for that. So this just helps clarify how and when they can be cited. So again, the parking lot landscaping, the building design features and the direct pedestrian access are needing adjustments or modifications, which you have already heard about. And so we can address the... There'll be a ramp coming out of the door and the ramp will be pointed towards the existing... It won't be pointed into the parking lot, it'll be pointed towards, there's an existing pedestrian walkway. Yeah, and so, so people will go down the ramp and then into the existing pedestrian walkway. And again, the location for this building is, is behind the existing building for, because the master plan requires it, but just also for safety concerns, as we talked about, A Safe Place is intended to be that. So when people come to the site, you go through two doors into the front and you're greeted in the lobby. The receptionists are behind bulletproof glass and the main doors to the site are locked. And folks do not enter the site unless they're escorted, they're identified who they are and they're escorted onto the site just to provide safety for the folks coming to seek assistance as well as the folks that are working there. So having this modular behind the back and not easily accessible to people coming, they might be angry or upset, I guess. It just, it helps fit within their model, so. Also requesting the modifications for design standards the code requires for buildings that are fronting the street. We, you know, obviously you want them to have a nice architectural interest. And so this, this building does not meet the variation in massing and wall articulation and facade transparency because it's a temporary building that we're renting and it will be removed from the site. So, yeah, those buildings typically aren't built with a lot of architectural interest. But we feel that, we feel that the location of it will be adequately screened from, from street view with the existing landscaping, with the existing site obscuring fence, so. And appreciate the recommended support of approval for modifying those design standards. So I just kind of already went into this slide as well. So, you know, it's a temporary building, it will be removed from the site within five years. And I talked about the security needs, it's not in a prominent location and we feel it's adequately screened with fencing and landscaping. So that's just the overview of the presentation. And then so we reviewed the staff report and we just have a couple of concerns with recommended conditions of approval and with requests that the Commission entertain a couple of modifications to the conditions of approval, specifically condition number four, Commissioner maybe read my mind about the bollard. Oh, no, sorry, condition number four is about garbage and recycling. There's a condition in there that says that they must comply with garbage and recycling. The garbage and recycling has to be temporarily moved because it will be blocked by the modular building. So it's going to be moved into a corner that has existing landscaping. But if the condition says that they have to comply and full compliance would require construction of, actual construction of a permanent garbage structure and screening of that garbage. And so our concern is that there's a condition requiring a permanent structure for something that's temporary. When the modular leaves the site, the garbage will go back to the existing location and then we'll have a garbage and screening structure that had been constructed, just sitting there not being used, taking up a couple of parking spaces. And so when the modular goes away, the intent is to put the garbage right back to where it is today. So we would request that, that be omitted, the condition requiring a permanent structure to accommodate a temporary use of the site. So condition number five is the bollard one. And as mentioned, the ramp will come down out of the door and into the existing pedestrian walkway. And we just request that maybe this condition be revised, allowing a little more flexibility, where we could work with Oregon City staff as to installing some type of barrier, maybe even some type of temporary planter with vegetation or, you know, some type of barrier, but not necessarily a bollard. And so we were just like, a little bit more flexibility with that condition rather than it must be a bollard. So, and then condition number seven is landscaping. Melissa is here to talk about and answer any questions you have about A Safe Place, but also about some of our concerns about, safety concerns about landscaping. So the condition reads that they would like trees added along the western property line and along the southern property line. And then also to be filled in with ground cover every four feet. A shrub, ground cover shrub every four feet. And so we have some concerns about requiring this much vegetation for a temporary use. And by the time that this vegetation is mature and providing the effective screen, the structure will be gone. So I provided some photos similar to what you've seen here today. Here's a view from across the street of the site. And this is the western property line. And I measured and the trees are about every 35 feet along the western property line. There's one where it's maybe 40 feet and that's where Deliana pointed out that maybe we should add a tree. And my concern is that as those trees continue to grow, the canopy will eventually touch. And I don't necessarily think a tree is needed in that location. So we would request that you omit the landscaping condition requiring a tree along the western property line. And, along the western property line. And we also request that you omit the, the condition requiring ground cover. And Melissa will talk much, much more in-depth on what our concerns are with that. But we do have serious safety concerns with adding a bunch of ground cover. As you can see here, here's the site obscuring fence. And we do agree that we could use, we could, the south property line could use a little help. And so we would be totally willing to add trees along the south property line. And one tree every 35 feet is about four, four more, four more new trees, four or five new trees. And we think that's totally reasonable and we're willing to do that, that's not a problem. When I pointed out in the master plan that when you abut a non-county property, the only screening our master plan currently requires is this type of fencing. So another reason or argument that we would say, "Hey, let's reduce those landscaping requirements," is this property abuts another county property and we have even more screening than what's required in our master plan currently. So, so those are our requests for mitigation, or, I mean, modifications to the existing conditions. And here's the site plan I was just showing that we agree that southern property line could use a little bit more landscaping and we would be fine with doing some trees and...
Just real quick, can you roll back that one, one picture?
This one? One more?
No, no, no. Wiggle the mouse around a little bit, I want to see if it shows up on the... Okay. Can you, real quick, just show what you mean by the trees in the west and the trees in the south? And where's the 40-foot gap?
Okay, so, I'll go back to... So this is the western property line here, along here.
Right, that doesn't mean anything to me, your map, that's why I was saying use the pictures.
Sure.
There we go.
So here, here's the western property line, here's Warner Milney and here's Beaver Creek. So this is the western property line and they were saying from the Shaver Building back, they wanted one tree every 35 feet and, but basically there's just a gap right here. Okay?
So are those existing trees?
These are existing mature trees.
Okay.
And the, these, you see my mouse right here? These are the trees that you're seeing in the aerial photo. And this is the gap where they would like one tree planted. And my concern is it's just too crowded to have a tree there. Does that help?
And then the southern does?
Oh, yeah. So this right here, see my mouse?
Yeah.
That's the southern property line and on the site plan, this is the southern property line right here. It's a little lacking, right? So we, yeah, we definitely think we could, we could do some trees here, so.
Okay, I just wanted the perspective of...
Yeah, sure. So that's my summary, but before I go into my summary, if you don't mind, I'll turn it over to Melissa to talk about.
I'll try not to take too much time. My name is Melissa Earlbaum and I'm the Director for Clackamas Women's Services. We are one of the primary partners at A Safe Place Family Justice Center, providing, we're a community-based nonprofit service provider. We've actually been serving Oregon City and Clackamas County for over 30 years, providing emergency shelter and a whole slew of services to victims of violence and their children, as well as providing prevention services. We're in the Oregon City Schools and...
Turn the light towards it.
And working in a variety of capacities to prevent these issues before they become violent situations. Our funding primarily is about, half of our funding is medical reimbursement fees and private fundraising that we go out into the community and do. Of the other half, a large percentage is federal and then state. And then we have a very, less than 10% is from the county and very little from the cities. So we do a lot of this work with our staff going out into the community to raise the resources and then to write grants for federal and state money. That's why we're really excited about the new grant that we have to provide more staff because last year alone, we, we, Clackamas Women's Services provided 30,000 units of service at A Safe Place Family Justice Center. And that is just one partner organization. There are many partner organizations also providing units of service and that keeps growing every year. And the number of children that we're serving keeps growing as well. So in order to do that, we have to have more staff and they have to be on-site. And real quickly, what I wanted to mention in regards to the landscaping is we've talked a little bit about physical safety. I don't think I need to, to reiterate that point. But one of the things I wanted you to consider is emotional safety. So we are working with survivors of trauma and line of sight is very important to them. So they're coming out of a very traumatic situation. They might be getting mental health counseling or parenting classes or support groups, things like that. They leave the building and when they leave the building, they need to... It's, it's important to us that they're able to see in that initial line of sight, walking to their car. Bushes and things like that can be really uncomfortable for folks, especially if they're leaving at night, even with lighting. In fact, I was telling Lindsay when we moved into the site, we initially thought, oh, let's, you know, we all love trees, let's like put some vegetation up. And our staff, my staff, my mental health counselors and folks were telling me, we can't do that because it's not trauma-informed, it provides a lot of fear for folks. And so the cleanest we can get that line of sight with whatever vegetation standards we have would be appreciated. The trees are not nearly as much of a challenge as low bushes where people can't kind of sit around. So I will leave it there unless you have any further questions, but I really appreciate the consideration and the work that staff has done on this application.
Thanks very much. We realize, all of us realize how important your service is to the community. So do you guys have any questions of the applicant?
I don't know whether the question's for you or for staff about the, the garbage barrier. That's, I assume it's the standard chain-link fence enclosure with the gate is kind of the, the standard that is, is being asked?
Yes, so our code requires that refuse and recycling areas are fully enclosed and visually screened. And it also requires that that enclosure is constructed of some material that's primary with the, or that's compatible with the primary building material.
And just to add that, so we also don't allow chain links, it's prohibited material now in our code. So what the applicant would need to do is adjust that standard, right? It is a code requirement if you move a garbage can or trash area that it has to comply. And so the, the Commission can think about, you know, when, maybe when it moves back in its final resting place, it does comply, so right now it's just a bunch of garbage cans not in an enclosure. But we would definitely have to think about how we want to address that code criteria. So is there an adjustment for it or how are we, how are we addressing it in the short run and the long run?
Okay. Where do you propose moving it to?
Okay, so I'll use my mouse on here. So currently you can kind of see the garbage cans right here. And the only reason why we're moving them is because they cannot be accessed. Otherwise they would stay there and then we wouldn't have to... But, so we are proposing to move them right here in this corner. And there's landscaping and fencing and screening right here, so. And then when the building goes away, we will move them back over here.
In that corner, it looks like you're under three fairly large fir trees, is that?
I'm not sure offhand what kind of trees they are, I don't remember, but they are fairly large trees.
Fir pine, something like that?
Yeah.
From this distance?
Yeah, there's, so there are these trees right here where my mouse is and right here.
Then a more general question too, I'm not sure, or you, are... The structure, we talk about structure going around the garbage cans. And I don't know, is it, is it individual cans or is it one, a big truck backs up and takes the whole container, dumps it and sets it back down? And what is the structure material for? Is it cement barricades or block walls or is it, it's not chain-link fence? I think I know that. So is it a cedar board container with some gates on it?
In my understanding, it has to be covered as well, right? Is that, I read that it had to be covered.
Not like the roof, it just has to be enclosed around all four sides.
Okay. And then so for, to answer the, it's, it's a dumpster. It's one dumpster and then one can.
Recycling bin.
Yeah, one recycling bin, so. It's a small dumpster too.
Well, I know they'd appreciate being able to drive straight in, dump it and drive straight out as opposed to maneuver around in a parking lot in general, but, okay. Thanks.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we have two people who have signed up for public testimony. And the first one is Kimberly Yabara. And I hope I didn't butcher that name too much. All right.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Kimberly Yabara.
Thank you.
From the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and I'm here in place of Sheriff Craig Roberts. I like to say that I'm much better looking than Sheriff Craig Roberts and...
The hair is definitely better.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. He cannot be here this morning, he had a private, he had a personal engagement, but he had planned to be here originally. So he asked me to extend his appreciation for the time and the attention that the city has taken and the county has taken to present the temporary structure to you. He's hoping that you will approve it this evening. And he wants you to know that this temporary structure will allow us to continue the good work and provide the resources that we provide every single day to change the lives that you heard about this evening. We've waited a long time to get this structure and we've waited a long time to get our people in a position where we can take advantage of the grant monies and provide more services to the survivors and their children. And so we thank you for the opportunity to present that this evening.
Great, thank you very much. And the next speaker is Kira Myrick. Merrick, I'm sorry. Merrick, Myrick, thank you.
Some of those are here, there's like 10 variations. Hello, everyone. My name is Kira Myrick and I'm speaking in support of the proposed modular office at the Shaver Building. I'm a fifth-generation resident of Oregon City. I'm also an employee of Clackamas Women's Services, where I work as the Administrative and Projects Coordinator. Prior to this, I worked at our emergency shelter. I joined Clackamas Women's Services over five years ago because of their commitment to serving the most vulnerable members of our community. Unfortunately, Oregon has one of the highest rates of domestic violence and sexual assault in the nation. CWS has a large and a growing number of service users. Over half of the women and girls in our state will experience domestic violence or sexual assault in their lifetime and about a third of our men and boys. However, this abuse is often hidden and many survivors feel incredibly alone in their suffering. This is why CWS strives to break the isolation of domestic and sexual violence. Our dedicated staff does this through our wraparound services, including our emergency shelter, 24-hour crisis line, mental health counseling, support groups, legal advocacy and others. In 2013, CWS expanded the scope of our services and partnerships by joining the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and other public agencies and community-based organizations to open a safe place for Clackamas County, where the partners provide coordinated services to survivors all under one roof. The establishment of A Safe Place and CWS moving its main office there has had a considerable and immediate impact for survivors in our community. Requests for services increase every year and we have a roster of agencies that would like to join this partnership. However, as you've heard previously, space is incredibly limited at A Safe Place and it's an increasing struggle to find room for all these partners and to provide the services that, that we intend to. For example, there's a lack of meeting space, which can exacerbate, you know, confidentiality concerns. We also regularly shuffle our offices around, we get creative, trying to find space to accommodate people. I think we've gotten as creative as we can get. We're running out of options, we simply just need more space. So this is why modular office is so needed, to take direct service staff, non-direct service staff like myself out of the main office and put us in this modular building. We're not providing the day-to-day services, we're the more the supportive folks and it gives more... it gives more space for survivors to access services, for victims' advocates and other folks to do the good work that they do. And so, that would also enable us to have a greater capacity to grow our onsite partnerships and just to serve more individuals, families, and children here in our community. Thank you for your consideration to approve a temporary office structure, as well as your support for survivors in our community. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kira. Commissioners.
We have rebuttals from the applicant.
Any rebuttal, any additional?
No rebuttal, but can we just?
Additional, yeah, additional info, yeah, absolutely.
We just, we forgot during our presentation.
We can call it additional info, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
No worries.
Slightly off, yeah, out of record. And we just really quickly wanted to point out the number of folks that showed up this evening, and did you want to talk, I didn't want to take the thunder.
Oh, no, I was just gonna, thank you again for your time, and I just, I did want to ask folks to raise their hand, that, we didn't want to provide a bunch of testimony and keep you here all night, but if folks could raise their hand that came in support, I think that was important for you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so if there are no other public comments, then we can close the public hearing and deliberate.
Yeah.
Commissioners.
Well, first off, I guess, I'm glad that there's a service, I just have this horrid vision of somebody coming into the office when it first started, and, oh, that's a terrible story about being abused, here's your paperwork, now go stand out in the, in the rain, wait for the bus to go to Sunnyside to get your next thing. God. So thank you for that. And then when you get to Sunnyside, okay, we got those, now go back to the place you just were on the bus, which will be here in a half hour, go wait out front. So, I guess really the only thing we have to be concerned about are the four, or the three things that.
Conditions.
They, they did one. In relationship to the garbage, I, I still think there needs to be some sort of protective structure around it. A, to keep somebody from driving into it, backing into it, to separate it from the parking. And just what comes to mind really quick is, at Wilco, they've got those wooden temporary corrals that, you know, they have for when they're doing livestock shows or something. It would be wooden, it would be temporary, it would be easy to move, but it would provide some sort of screening. So I think, I don't know that a full-on structure is necessary, although the flipside of it is that it could become an additional storage location for, when the, when the site moves, but. As far as the bollard, I think I already kind of discussed that, I think, I think a planter or a jersey barrier or something, my concern, and I see lots of VFW people here who've been in unsecure situations, the more cement between you and them, whoever them are is, is good, and if, you know, some SOB decides they want to drive their car into the building, you know, whatever it might be, that, that's a good thing. So, and if it's a planter, that's even better, you got a little bit of greenery. I don't think it needs to be a bollard specifically, although something anchored into the ground is, is good. As far as landscaping, I kind of agree with the west side concern that, you know, but, yes, in the long run, a mature tree would still be good there. But, I think, yeah, the south side needs it, and it should be outside of the fence, as, you know, again, as, you know, the testimony of not one, you know, wanting things where people can jump out, you know, or if somebody is already inside and they're trying to run away, it's good to, to be able to see where they're, where they have gone, they have scaled the fence and done whatever they're going to do. So, I think any landscaping at all should be exterior or on the outside of the fence. It's just, it's just basic security, I mean, I've been overseas, I've been a security officer, and, flat and clean and, you know, I hate to use the term, but, you know, a line of sight kill zone is good, you want to see as far and as clear as you can. So, I think I'd support any southern exposure landscaping, I don't think there's a need for any western landscaping, or the stuff along Warner Millie, based on the particular needs of this establishment. To address your three adjustments, I concur with your adjustment one, being a global, and two and three should be specific, so.
Commissioner Johnson.
I basically agree with Damon on it, and I guess I'll take a little bit different approach to the, to the conditions, all with one reference point. This is a five-year commitment, and with landscaping, whatever you put in, probably in five years, will start blossoming out to the height and what we want for screening, but with this modular moving then, and something else coming in, it may not require that screening, or it may not be, the screening may not be in the right place for the next building or whatever comes in, that we end up spending a fair amount of money on things that would be nice to have, but we're not into a decade or two decades of timeframe that it'll be beneficial. We're, we're tying up a lot of investment into the landscaping, which is five-year limit on it, and from what I gather from the number of people in the audience, and the services provided by this modular, some of that money could probably be used in other ways that's more beneficial immediately.
Just real quick on that, the reason why I'd say the southern is because, A, it's just fence, and B, you know, so it, it does at some point need to be screened, and additionally, it's next to a wetland, so they're not going to be building a building or anything there, that's going to be an exposed area for decades.
And, and I didn't mean to wipe out all of the landscaping, the southern one is a different, and I think the applicant referred to that, that 35-foot spacing or some spacing like that that comes close would be adequate there. The board, I don't know.
Commissioner Gah.
I don't need to belabor all the facts that Damon and Vern said, and to hear myself speak, so I'm fine.
Okay, great. I echo Commissioner Johnson's comments, this is a modular, a temporary modular office building, and I don't think, I think we can get into the role of, of over-designing and over-developing things. I think that the staff should have flexibility with the bollard, you know, and where it should be located, how it should look. I don't want to descend into that role of how to design a bollard up here, most definitely. As far as the garbage and recycling goes, boy, I'm not sure exactly what you guys were intending to do as far as screening goes, but again, this is a temporary modular office building, and I don't think that we ought to invest any time or money into any significant screening until they actually come up, and I hope they can, come up with additional permanent square footage for this facility because it's much needed. And then as far as the landscaping goes, I also echo the need for trees along the south, eliminating any kind of need for shrubs, and, and that's pretty much it. I think that's all I've got for landscaping.
So, just to be clear from what you're saying, then, you're okay with the dumpster and the recycling bin just sitting in a couple of parking spots?
Given the fence and screening in that location, no one is ever going to see it, I don't think it really matters.
So you're, well, my, my concern was as much, like, there's no separation between a dumpster on wheels and a car that might be parked right next to it. So that's why I was thinking, at very least, like another jersey barrier, or the temporary Wilco fencing, you know, something that's, that, so, I mean, that's my concern, is that, again, you have area of separation, so.
I park next to those all the time.
I know.
Yeah, I don't, I really don't think that it's up to us to decide whether or not the, I think this is really a design review, staff-level issue, and I think it's really at the discretion of staff. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that to staff to decide whether or not a barrier is needed for that, for that location.
But they've already said it is, they said there needs to be an enclosure. So are you recommending that it just needs to be?
I can point out the code section if you like.
I'm recommending some flexibility, is that, is that absolutely required? Is there a way of not doing that?
Yeah, so we have a code section, 17.
I mean, I can understand if, if we, if we had a permanent building there.
Right.
Then I would, I would be definitely a strong advocate for, for enclosing the garbage facilities, but this is a, this is a modular office building that's going to be there for what, five years? And so we're going to end up with this enclosure that is going to have to be put up and then taken down, and, I don't know, it just seems, it seems awkward to me. But that's not part of the code, so let me know what that is.
The code section 1762-085, so we're ignoring the material standards. It's a, about a quarter-page-long standard, and talks about the requirement for garbage enclosures and recycling enclosures. There's a couple of standards that are listed under here, some of them include that it's fully enclosed and visually screened, designed with sturdy materials that are compatible with the primary structures, located in a manner easily accessible by collection vehicles, located in a manner not to hinder travel lanes, walkways, streets, and adjacent properties. And then there's some other ones that they're maintained, and on a hard, level surface that avoids ponding, and sized appropriately.
But that doesn't address temporary.
Can they get any kind of a, an adjustment for a temporary structure?
Yes, it is not prohibited, so you can add it to the list of adjustments for this one, I would recommend that you add it to the list of adjustments for this detailed development plan, not for all future.
Definitely a two or three, not a.
Given the circumstances of this particular case. So you could add it, adjust 1762-085 if you wish, and then any mitigation you feel is necessary, kind of go through those criteria for adjustment.
And, thinking about it more, I, I kind of agree that we don't want any more structure there because that's more places for people and things to hide.
Mm-hmm.
They're already potentially hiding behind the dumpster, but we don't need to give them any more room than that. So, yeah, I think, I think I'm more in Paul's line of, just for this structure because of the safety and security, and because of the temporary nature to allow an adjustment to not require a structure.
And, just to clarify then, that, this adjustment is just to, for moving the garbage location here when they move back.
Whole different world.
Right.
Then that would comply with our, whatever our code is at the time they relocate them back, in five years, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, just so that they have some permanence as to where the garbage can be located, instead of having a, a structure moved here, and then a structure moved there, and it just doesn't seem, and I agree, I, I echo Damon's comments on, on, you know, additional hiding places for people and that kind of thing, so, I think this is probably best for this application.
Should I make a motion?
Yep.
Are we ready to make a motion?
Are we ready to make a motion?
Would you like me to summarize those items you discussed?
Yeah, that would be great, yes.
I make the motion that we do what she says.
I haven't said you. Okay, so we have condition of approval number four was for demonstrating compliance with the refuge and recycling standards in 1762-085. Sounds like the discussion is to remove condition of approval number four and add the code standard 1762-085 to that modification for building material standards, because there's some, as well as the site.
Yeah, just the building, it still needs to be leveled, still needs to be, you know, not a ponding area.
And not enclosed.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're getting rid of the material standards and the enclosure part, okay.
So are we adding that to the modification through the site plan and design review process, or adjustments?
Adjustment.
Through the detailed development.
So, actually, in that case, we'll keep condition of approval number four, we'll just modify it to say everything except for the things we just mentioned, which are the enclosure and the material.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then we'll add the enclosure material to the adjustment sections through site plan and design review, as applicable just to this detailed development plan. Also, I heard for the landscaping, that it be placed on the exterior of the southern fence, and that there be no additional requirements for landscaping on the western fence, and if those landscaping requirements include one tree every 35 feet, remove the references to shrub every four feet. That is all I have.
Um, the bollard.
Oh, bollard. So removing bollard to allow some flexibility there to be some other barrier.
In the design review process, yeah.
Right.
Bollard becomes barriers.
Right, yeah, change bollard to barrier and we can be better.
Okay, so we can, when we do the notice of decision, we could modify that to make sure that the report accurately reflects the discussion and planning commission.
Yeah.
Okay, motion?
I guess I make the motion, I'm trying to go to the top of this to get the number.
Click on agenda, and read it right there.
To agenda, go right there.
And then.
Okay, right there, okay. I move that, we approve PC 17-135, general development master plan amendment and detailed development plan to allow temporary modular building at 256 Warner Millie, planning file CP 17-0003, NDP 17-001, with adjusted, adjustments?
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah.
Second? Oh, sorry.
Fine.
You can have the next one.
I'll look it up.
Okay. Okay, we ready for the vote?
Commissioner Gah.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner Esp.
Aye.
And Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
All right, go forth and do great things, or continue to do great things.
Thank you, thank you for all your great work.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Let's be clear.
I'll wait till everybody files out. This is a general development or master plan amendment and detailed development plan to allow, oh, I'm sorry, a legislative amendment, LE 1702, legislative amendment to adopt the McLaughlin-Kanema Trail Plan, amending the transportation system plan, Trails Master Plan, and Parks Master Plan. And we have Kelly Reed as our planner this evening.
So we don't have to do all these sufficient specificity.
This is a legislative enactment, so the, the whole disclosures and the ex parte contacts and all that stuff does not apply.
Right.
So you're free to talk to whoever you want, about whatever you want with regard to this, because the more informed you are, the better decision you make.
All right, fantastic.
How do you want me to fill out this form?
Yeah, I think I'll close this, and I'm trying to get to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, then you, then the doctor will follow. That's where I thought it was. Didn't go there. When you have to repeat that. I always think it's funny that it comes up as a script and then goes to, you know, the first pop. And I have nothing over here, I have to do it. You might be able to roll your wheel now. I don't know.
Why do we need these games? It is, I understand that this isn't, it doesn't matter or anything, it's just the plan.
This is just the plan, the master plan, and they're going to do the design review to work out all the details.
So that's functional, yeah.
Yeah.
When something comes along, we can do it.
Right, yeah, I don't want to talk about bollards and trash and clothes.
I'm ready when you are.
Okay. Okay, well, then I'm ready when you are, we'll have.
Thank you, sorry for the delay.
It's no problem.
Thank you, planning commissioners, my name is Kelly Reed, I'll turn this down, so as not to confuse you, and I'm a planner with Oregon City, and I'm here to present the staff report for legislative file LE 1702. This is an amendment to the comprehensive plan to adopt the McLaughlin-Kanema Trail Plan as an ancillary document to the transportation system plan, Trails Master Plan, and Parks Master Plan, and to amend the project lists for those master plans. So first, I'm going to tell you a little bit about the process and the plan itself, and then we'll get into the criteria for the legislative amendment. Please bear with me, there's a lot here to cover. And first, I want to acknowledge also the people that contributed to this plan, especially the community advisory group. We had almost 20 people serving on that advisory group, and from. and from lots of different organizations and areas within the trail area, the trail planning area. So it was wonderful to have all that participation. I want to thank them again for their contributions. So we applied, the city applied for a grant back in spring 2016. And the impetus for applying for a grant to complete this trail plan was a gap analysis that the Parks Department had done back in 2014, kind of looking at connecting up these parks, including Old Kanema Park, Kanema Children's Park, and the Promenade, and the 2013 Transportation System Plan adoption. And those are shown here, I'll go through those. But also the Riverwalk concept design process. That process was looking at how the Riverwalk would connect up to the McLaughlin Promenade. And we knew that we had some plans that showed an additional trail connecting to that area. And so that was another impetus for this trail plan to, you know, become a city priority. So we applied for a grant from Metro's Nature and Neighborhoods program, and we won that grant. And so we embarked on this journey with the community. This Transportation System Plan map, I just wanted to show you the projects that are currently in our TSP that kind of make up this trail. The first one is that yellow line in the middle, that's Project S-36, a shared-use path. And then on either end of it, we have those purple dashed lines. Those represent family-friendly routes on existing streets where we would encourage bike and pedestrian use. And so if you kind of connect up the purple lines and the yellow line, that kind of is how the TSP was looking at this trail. And we also had the Trails Master Plan, which identified the connection, but didn't have as detailed a route shown and as detailed of a map. It was a very high-level map shown in the Trails Master Plan. And so we didn't necessarily want to presume that this alignment was the right one. We wanted to have a process, really a public process, to consider other potential alignments and really drill down into some of the design detail for the trail as well. So that was the goal of this trail planning process. After being awarded the grant funds, we formed an advisory group and hired a consultant, Alta Planning and Design. So the full alignment report that you see was prepared by Alta Planning and Design, and all the nice graphics were done by them. And one of our first orders of business was with the advisory group and the consultant team to look at the existing conditions here. We walked along Highway ninety-nine. We walked through Old Kanema Park. We walked through Kanema. One of my favorite quotes that I heard a lot throughout this process was, "Streets in Kanema were not built for cars." And so we had a challenge on our hands, you know, to figure out how to share this space. So that was, I'll talk more about that later. And we looked at some other potential alignments as well. This is South End Road, High Street to South End as it becomes South End. And then, of course, Highway ninety-nine, that's in the Kanema area where the sidewalk kind of disappears a little bit. And we actually crossed there with our big group, and it was a little bit nerve-wracking to do so. But we all made it. Along with advisory group meetings, we also wanted to engage the greater community. And so we planned an event, Greenway for a Day, where we actually closed off or marked the trail or one of the potential trail alignments and invited the community to come out and use that and then give us input and feedback on their experience. We didn't choose to ask people to walk on all three of the alignments that we looked at because mostly liability, you know, asking people to go and cross, go and cross ninety-nine on their own without any, you know, flaggers or street closures wasn't something that we wanted to do. And then existing conditions on South End Road have, there are some pinch points with very narrow shoulders where you're about two feet, you have about two feet in between the salt cliff and cars driving next to you. And so we also didn't want to put people in that situation either. So we chose the most safest route that exists now and asked them to walk the trail. So we also paired that with cleanup ivy pole in Old Kanema Park that turned out really well. Hopefully, you've noticed the differences there. But we ended up having almost eighty people come out and use the Greenway. And we gathered input from them through surveys. And we put a survey online and got additional input from people who maybe didn't make it out but still wanted to weigh in on the trail alignments. Some more photos from the day. We had people come out from the neighborhood. We promoted it greatly right within the general area, the immediate area. But we actually had people coming from outside of McLaughlin and Kanema, which was really interesting, probably because the newspaper picked it up and published a media release. But we were targeting the neighborhood folks. Some of the takeaways from the input we received at this event were that Old Kanema Park really was everybody's favorite part, or most people's favorite part. They liked the views, they liked the access to nature, the quietness in the park. And then really the least favorite part of it was, no surprise here, walking along ninety-nine. We did have it lined with some cones and balloons, but it certainly is, that's not enough to really make people feel comfortable walking there. So, you know, we definitely heard that loud and clear. And the advisory group viewed all of those results and tried to incorporate that input into the recommendations. So the advisory group set goals for the trail and then used those goals as evaluation criteria for three alignment options that we looked at. The first one was Alignment A. This one crosses ninety-nine from the Promenade using that existing pedestrian bridge and staircase and then walks on the sidewalk there by the ODOT overlook, continues on the boardwalk, and then crosses ninety-nine. I think it's shown here as Jerome Street. I think that is correct, actually, that Jerome Street is where we have a planned pedestrian beacon in our Transportation System Plan. And so then from there, we're going through the neighborhood streets in Kanema to get to Kanema Children's Park. This, there's some constraints here. The existing boardwalk is only about five feet wide. Of course, we don't have a crossing, safe crossing right now at Jerome Street. This option was rejected by the advisory group as a preferred trail, but the group did think it would make sense to build a portion of this in the far future when the Kanema connection of the Riverwalk is constructed. And so that would, can you guys see my mouth? The Riverwalk would be down below along the river. And once that made its way up, then folks said, well, yeah, after that, then we can build this crossing and enhance this area and connect that up. But until then, it really doesn't make sense to use this. The boardwalk's in kind of bad shape, and, you know, this certainly isn't ADA accessible with that staircase.
Or the bridge.
Right.
Alignment B, this uses, goes next to the VFW Building, down onto Tom Water Drive, onto ninety-nine, through Old Kanema Park, and then uses the streets within Kanema. This is the most direct route. It was, it ended up being the most affordable. And it was really the only one that included a good bit of Old Kanema Park, which, you know, people really seemed to like. And it includes great views of the falls as well. Folks were concerned about the VFW driveway, how it's narrow and steep, really only one-way, and low visibility there. They're concerned about crossing South Second, crossing here at ninety-nine. For some folks, it's not comfortable. Crossing here at Tom Water is definitely not comfortable for anyone, I don't think. And then crossing at High Street, it was maybe a little bit better because there's a four-way stop there. This would then, or the other concern here is just, you know, the foot traffic on streets in Kanema. Kanema's a quiet neighborhood. Some people were concerned about more foot traffic. While we think that most of the foot traffic would probably be local people in the neighborhood walking between the parks, you know, we can't control who walks on a trail. The third, let me, let you look at these first. So this is walking on Highway ninety-nine, you know, and then through Old Kanema Park. Of course, there's a PGE substation there as well. PGE was represented on the advisory group as well as ODOT. And so we worked with them through this. And I'll talk about PGE later and how we would handle going through their property. Alignment C, this uses High Street to South End Road and then Fifth Avenue in Kanema. This was a good option because it offered some access to nature. It crossed South Second in the safest place right now, which is High Street. But there were concerns about the fast traffic on South End and really that it kind of bypasses Old Kanema Park, so you don't get to take advantage of that park experience. This trail alignment really was not an easy decision for the advisory group. In the end, the group landed on an interim recommendation and a permanent recommendation, so I'll talk about both of those. Interim, this was kind of just process of elimination. It's the only available route to walk right now, and it represents the safest one with the least amount of investment needed to actually make it safe for people to use in the short term. And so that includes coming, bypassing the VFW because of the driveway issue. Instead, from the Promenade coming up to High Street on Second Street, right here for audience, walking down High Street. Now, we had some public comments about where to cross. So I think it's important to note that users can cross here at High Street and then walk on the other side of South Second or can stay on this side of South Second and cross at ninety-nine. It's kind of just preference, personal preference. The reason it's shown in the map on this side is that we do have an opportunity to widen the sidewalk a little bit, right here in front of the Still House. The lane, the travel lane, is fourteen feet wide, and so we could reduce that to about eleven and expand the sidewalk by three feet. Also, if you're on a bike, you probably would stay on the right side of the road and maybe on the sidewalk, use that wider sidewalk. So that's why it's shown here, but that doesn't mean people couldn't cross here. We use Highway ninety-nine, frontage, PGE into Old Kanema Park, and then, of course, through Kanema. So here is the Promenade Park and Second. So this would be kind of better, a little bit better connected to the actual Promenade to get people out onto High Street. On ninety-nine, we would do some safety improvements, put some sort of buffer in between the people on the trail and the cars. And so what's shown there is some sort of buffer. It could be a vertical barrier, it could be landscaping. We're still working with ODOT on the details, and it would require a design exception. And so our engineers are talking to their engineers about the possibilities there. And then we'd put shared markings in the parking lot of Old Kanema Park coming out, leading to Third Avenue. So this is, it's really hard to tell, we don't have any good aerial photos of the Old Kanema Park parking lot, but we kind of continue the trail through the parking lot and then to the street network. And then within the streets in Kanema, you know, this is a National Register Historic District. We've kind of already established that it's not appropriate to build sidewalks and curbs in this neighborhood. And a lot of houses are built right up to the street anyway, and so there's really not room to put anything more. You have streets that are between sixteen and twenty feet in pavement width usually. And so it's very constrained. There's not a lot of room to add different pathways or bike lanes or anything like that. So what we're proposing is traffic calming and sharing the street. We did some traffic counts in Kanema and determined that the state statute allows us to reduce the speed limit in here to twenty miles per hour. There are some parameters around when you can do that, but we can meet those parameters for Third, Fourth, and Fifth avenues. And so we would propose to reduce the speed limit, add on-street markings. The little diagram here, this one, is just an example of something that we could use as on-street markings using thermoplast or just paint. Using visual narrowing, this picture right here shows visual narrowing using landscaping. In this case, we would just use paint in Kanema because of the historic district. It's something that's really not permanent and can easily be removed. We would add wayfinding signage. And then less of a priority and more as a kind of backup plans if the above items don't work would be some additional stop signs at those intersections that don't have any and potentially speed bumps. But we would start with the things up at the top of the list. And so, of course, we don't have the details worked out about exactly where all of this stuff would go. And so this would require us to, of course, work with the Kanema neighbors and coordinate on where all the markings would go, how this would be installed. We're not just going to go out there tomorrow and install everything quietly. We'll talk with the neighborhood. Long-term trail recommendation. The group chose Option B. In the long term, we think that this is, it's possible to get a better and safer experience than the interim. And the way that we would do that would be through closing the left turn from Highway ninety-nine E or McLaughlin Boulevard onto Tom Water. Right now, not too many cars actually take that turn, but it's dangerous. There are, we pulled the crash data. ODOT is in favor of closing it, and so we're working with them on a closure plan. So cars would still be able to use Tom Water to access these properties, but nobody would be allowed to turn left to come in. And then trying to bypass the light here. ODOT actually already did a traffic study to find out if that would impact the intersection and, you know, add more congestion. And they didn't find any major impacts. I think they said it added one second to some of the, you know, how long you have to wait there. Average was just another second in that turn lane. So they're supportive. So we'd close that off, and then that would mean that people could walk down that, walk out here and not have to worry about cars swooping in from the highway. We'd come along Tom Water. We'd create a safe crossing at Tom Water, and I have a diagram of that. And then we, instead of coming out along ninety-nine, as we're doing in the interim plan, we would come behind these properties along the, kind of the back hillside. And that would be, you know, the reason this is kind of long-term is that that would be, that would coincide with redevelopment of those properties. So these are mostly zoned mixed use. But they're currently underdeveloped. If redevelopment occurs, we would try and integrate the trail in with that redevelopment. So of course, we don't know the timing of that. It could be five years from now. It could be 20 years from now. But having this plan would allow us to piece those together, piece those segments together, get people off of 99 where it's not comfortable, get them back here. And then just for a little bit, we'd come in front of PGE. Now, the reason that it doesn't go behind PGE as well and then into the park is that, well, one, PGE is not really going to redevelop. They have a substation there to stay. They're going to be expanding their substation as the city expands. And the existing, there is a little dirt path that you can get through, physically get through. But it's not safe. It's really hidden. You know, we talked about visibility issues earlier with the earlier item. Same idea here, lots of places to hide. And so it's not a secure space. And so that's why we're going in front of PGE. And then the, the plan through Kenema is the same as the interim plan. So no change to that. We also, you know, we talked about closing Tumwater. Another idea that came up was actually moving the VFW driveway entirely from here to right here, where we have City Rideaway. And there's a little house here, a little water tower here. And we haven't done enough study to say whether this is feasible yet. But it's an idea that our Parks Department was supportive of, getting an easier access into VFW, trying, you know, figuring out if we can design it such that no parking is lost. And then closing this one off completely and only having that be for the trail users. So, let me show you some pictures of this. So on Tumwater near the museum, we would give, put a little road diet in here. So reduce the travel lanes and then expand the path here. Right now, I think it's a five-foot sidewalk. So we'd expand that to our trail standard, which is 10 to 12 feet. And then crossing at Tumwater. So we've got the museum here. And the Still House is in this direction. This goes up the hill to High Street. So the trail, the 10 to 12-foot trail is coming along. And then we'd have a crosswalk with a refuge island. This is shown as a raised crosswalk, actually, and beacon, flashing beacons as well. So that would be the solution to get people safely across this area. You know, you can kind of cross one lane, wait in the middle if you need to wait, and then cross the other half of the street and then continue on Tumwater. Now, the area behind where we talked about properties being redeveloped and the trail going in kind of behind them. I'm sorry, I go, I went backwards. We're going backwards. We need to go forwards. Okay. So here's where, how that trail would go, potentially go, be integrated in with that redevelopment. So on the left, you see kind of a hypothetical building, mixed-use building with maybe some outdoor patio space. Maybe it's a restaurant with some back patio. And then you have the trail. And then you have maybe an alleyway or that's a parking lot access back there. So this is just one potential idea. It's not necessarily at all how, you know, how it might go. We intend to be flexible. And I'll talk more about that later. So we have some, we got some public comments about this in particular that I want to talk about. So the group, the advisory group was supportive of the B alignment, B option. We reached consensus, almost consensus minus one person. And with that recommendation, they included all of these improvements. They weren't comfortable recommending the trail without, you know, the, the left turn closure, the safe crossing and things like that. So those are all kind of need-to-haves according to the community advisory group. Okay. I'm sorry, I know this is long. I go into the review criteria now. So as a reminder, this legislative amendment to adopt the trail plan as an ancillary document to the comprehensive plan, amend the transportation system plan and the trails master plan, project lists. The review criteria is Chapter 1768 of the municipal code, which references the statewide planning goals, comprehensive plan goals and policies, and of course, our transportation system plan, trails master plan, and parks master plan. Also, as criteria is some statewide plans, the Oregon Transportation Plan, Oregon Highway Plan, Transportation Planning Rule, and regional transportation plans. We have findings within the staff report for all of these. Just want to point out a couple of comprehensive plan goals and policies that pertain to this item. One, Oregon City's Parks and Recreation System. This talks about constructing a network of off-street trails throughout the city, seeking out opportunities to coordinate and partner with other departments. And so this, this project represents a collaboration between ODOT, City Public Works, City Parks, PGE. We, we talked with the VFW. We talked with the, the Museum of the Oregon Territory. So it's a great collaboration. Land use transportation goals and policies about multimodal travel options, providing walkable neighborhoods, interconnected pedestrian system linking neighborhoods to employment centers, activity centers. And of course, safety, improving the safety of pedestrian crossings and the overall system. So this plan, of course, meets all of these goals and policies. I'm not going to go through the detailed findings. Those are in the staff report. So the project list amendments include this one. On the left is Project S-36. That was that yellow line we looked at at the very beginning, which is shown here in gray. So the interim trail recommendation and the long-term trail recommendations are both shown here for Project S-36. Project B-57 currently is a center-street, shared roadway. And we would be adding a little segment of High Street to that because the interim trail plan has us connecting using High Street. And so our Public Works Department would want to add shares to that. This map shows four projects that are new or revised. These is a family-friendly Route 22. We're separating that from family-friendly Route 34 just for, so that we can, they're kind of different projects. And so we wanted to separate them that are currently the same project number. The new crossing here at South Second and Tumwater is C-37. And then this Project D-96 is the left turn closure. And then last, TSP project amendment, Project FF-21. Currently, this just includes Fourth Avenue and a little bit of Fifth Avenue. And what we would do is amend it to include Third, Fourth to the Children's Park, and Fifth. And this family-friendly route would, in this case, mean, you know, the shared lane markings, the traffic calming, the signage. And that is, those things are necessary or designating and signing these as bike and pet family-friendly routes is necessary in order to get the 20 miles per hour zone. So we, we didn't want the 20 miles per hour just on Fourth Avenue. We thought it was appropriate to do on Third and Fifth because those have very similar conditions to Fourth. And we know that, you know, kids walk to the bus stop up at the corner of Fifth and South End. And down on Third, Third Avenue, they walk to the bus stop. And so, you know, we have people walking. Let's, why not include the whole neighborhood? Trails and Parks Master Plan project lists. We have the Oregon City Loop Trail, which is kind of a loop around the entire city. And then the McLaughlin Kenema segment is Project L-19. We would be amending both of those, just kind of amending the descriptions of them. And then adding two projects to the Parks Master Plan list. One is to modify that parking lot access to the parking lot next to the VFW. And of course, like I said, that there's some investigation needed to make sure that's even feasible. And of course, some coordination with VFW. And then adding a project also to the Parks Master Plan to add a little path from the promenade sidewalk to South Second. Right now, it's just grass. So it would be, you know, maybe a 70-foot-long sidewalk segment just to create that, that space so that it's actually ADA. Okay. I received some public comments that I want to talk to you about. And I need to introduce some new items into the record that I just received today. So public comments that we received previously. One was a letter from ODOT in support. One was a letter from PGE. PGE indicated that they would propose using a license agreement with the city to allow public access on their property. So if we build a trail there, then we'd have a license agreement rather than an easement with them. And, you know, there's some technicalities there. But that was their suggestion. They intend to work with us to move that forward when we're ready. We received a few letters from local, from residents and property owners in the area, which, those were addressed in the staff report. And then I have some new items to introduce into the record. So these include, I'll start at the back. An environmental report, which is an appendix to the plan. This just looked at our natural resource overlay and scanned for wetlands in the area. And then we received a letter from attorneys for one of the business owners along the alignment. We received an email from resident Paul Edgar, who's here and will probably speak. And then I wrote a memorandum in response to the letter and the email that we received today. So I know that's a lot to go through. And I am happy to, oh, I'll summarize, I suppose. And then you'll hear from, I want to summarize because this actually resulted in a recommendation from staff for a planning, a condition of approval. So I want to explain that. And then I'm sure that folks will speak during public comment period as well. So the letter we received had concerns about the use of private property, showing the trail kind of going behind the new future development on 99. And that there seemed to be some concerns about the potential for the city to want to condemn property and put a trail through sooner rather than waiting for redevelopment. And then the placement of where that line is on the trail plan seems to bisect the property. So I wanted to clarify that the intent is to go at the very back edge of the property, right before that big cliff. And if that was not, that's the intent of where, what the drawing is showing. But we intend to be flexible with where exactly that would go. And we would want to collaborate with future developers on how that trail gets integrated into the redevelopment. And so the condition of approval that I'm suggesting is just to add some clarity to the trail recommendation. It would be to revise the trail plan to say explicitly that exact trail location through private properties is flexible and will be determined through coordination with future developers or owners. So I thought it, it did make sense to be explicit about that in the plan itself. And the other, the other items, I will let those be addressed, I think, through public comment and then discussion and questions. I'm sorry, I want to give other people a chance to speak.
Right. Okay. Questions of staff, commissioners?
Anything to them?
Oh, no, not right now.
Okay. I do. I know there's a whole bunch of stakeholders. Can you go back to the Tumwater area? Some map that shows that. Not necessarily your intersection, but the bigger.
Yeah.
Not that. Keep going. It's, there we go. That, that's good enough. So there's, talk about punching a road through to the back end of the VFW parking lot, which I think is, on the face of it, insane. The topography of that parking lot means you would drive over a ridge and immediately be facing downhill at about a 40-degree plus slope. It's already, I mean, today, we wouldn't let them build that parking lot. So, you know, what I didn't hear is, was there any discussion about once Tumwater's closed, which we can do in 10 minutes with the Jersey Barrier done, of just widening their driveway? I mean, it's going to take as much as it would be to punch a road through. And, and if not that, build stairs and an ADA ramp going down parallel to their, to their driveway. I mean, I can't see how it would cost any more than punching a road through virgin territory, through granite.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I don't have any photos of the area, but we measured slopes. The existing driveway slope and the area right, let's see, right here, where a driveway could be connected potentially, is like, this is not more steep than the existing driveway. It's not ideal, but it's, it's not worse. And then this, on either side of the driveway, you've got, you know, basalt outcroppings. And so the challenges with, you know, adding, widening are.
The same as trying to punch a road through, the same basalt outcroppings.
Potentially.
So, I mean, it just.
Yeah.
So, and I know one of the earlier plan discussions was to just put a bridge from the end of the trail by the VFW, where, where the sidewalk and stuff ends kind of in front of their building, just across to the boot. So that you would just walk across to another overpass and you'd be right there in front of a museum. Hey, why don't you stay and visit the museum while you're on your little walk? Was there any discussion about an overpass or?
Not really. It seems like it would be a little bit costly compared to some of these options.
Okay.
Of course, yeah. And that's why I want to, I really want to emphasize that further study is needed.
Right.
On all of that. And the goal really is to get a safe path through here, whether it's through closure of the driveway or maybe adding a elevated pathway, like you said. And I think we need to do, we need to look more into the cost of those things, too.
Yeah. Well, I think, I mean, just on the face of it, just even if it's just building stairs down and, you know, because with Tumwater closed off, you've got that entire width of Tumwater to bring some form of connectivity, particularly since there's already the sidewalk that's going to take people past. They're going to already go down to the end of the street. A, because it's a better view of the falls, all that. And that gets to this, this permanent alignment going up Tumwater and behind properties and then out to PGE. I just, I mean, if I'm walking the path and I'm that close, I want to go see the falls. So I'm going to cross, go in front of the Still House, go across, look at the falls. And then I, I, you know, am I going to double back across the thing? Go all the way back up to Tumwater and keep walking it? Or am I going to keep walking down the boardwalk? And, or just cross the street and walk down 99? Which I think is, is much better because all those properties you got pointed out have been what they've been for 50 years or more. And there's no particular. And there's no particular thing in sight that says that they're not going to be the same way for another 50 years. And then we have the potential of Property 1 and Property 4 and 5 develop, but 2 doesn't for 100 years. So you've got this sidewalk that doesn't go anywhere, and a yard that people can't go into, or a fenced business, and then another sidewalk that leads to nowhere. So I think the reality of it is, is we need to just improve the 99 access. At least, we can increase people to cross over, do the viewpoint, and cross back. My concern would be that people would walk down the boardwalk for a certain way and then go, "No cars," and dash across. So I think, you know, some sort of enclosed walkway, like you had with the Jersey Barriers or whatever, means they're not going to run across and hop a barrier, they're going to just cross at a light. But I think there's, you know, there's a certain reality check there. I mean, we want to encourage people to stop along the way. And there's nothing to see along Tumwater and, you know, a cliff that's going to drop rocks on me. You know, it's, and that's another thing, we've got a maintenance problem every spring, after all the winter frosts have dropped some of those rocks down. We're going to be out repairing the path, picking things up. And, you know, temporary things in Oregon City have a tendency to be decades long of temporary. And I think we just need to, I think we just need to plan for reality. And I respect the work they did, but, you know, I just think, you know, for one thing, it would encourage people, if those properties did redevelop, to, into some sort of commercial thing, to stop in. If it's going behind a boutique, they're not going to go in. If it, you know, or antique store, or a bar, whatever it might be, or, you know, a soda shop so they can stop with their kids. So, was there any discussion of that before we shifted everything back into Tumwater?
Well, you know, we talked about the need for development to really face, face the trail and not turn its back on the trail. So, you know, like you said, you want to invite people into the businesses, so, like, have that outdoor patio seating back there, and, you know, have it be a second entrance to whatever, you know, building is there. And so then, it's an amenity for the new development, rather than just a sidewalk that goes behind the building where there's a blank wall. And then, of course, it's a lot safer to use the trail when you've got eyes on it from that development. We didn't talk about, we, it didn't come up that people would, you know, go off-trail to go view the falls and then come back. I think we were thinking more of the local community users, like people that live in Kenema-McLaughlin and want to travel back and forth to, you know, visit the park, or, you know, come, go downtown. And so those folks, you know, they see the falls every day and maybe wouldn't do that. And then also, once the, you know, once everything's actually built, you have the Riverwalk connection, you know, people will have been down on the Riverwalk to look at the falls, they won't need to use the ODOT overlook. Right now, of course, that, that would probably, you're right, that would happen. But, yeah, we didn't, the other things that you brought up didn't really come up in our discussions.
Okay. But I'm just curious, the little black line going around Old Kenema Park, is that a trail?
Yeah. That's an existing trail.
There's no identifying markers, it's just, there's this big black blob, and is that the park, or is the gray?
Sure. The park is the gray splotch, the trail is the black line, and the upper trail here is very steep. This part of the trail is the flat, kind of the flat part of it. And so, our goal, you know, knowing, we have some topography issues in this whole area, there was no way to actually get an ADA trail anywhere in this unless you were just going to blast through everything and, you know, totally change the streets in Kenema.
Can't follow the old trolley line?
Well, not, not if you want to get to Kenema Children's Park. But, so we, you know, we can't meet ADA because of the existing conditions, but we tried to get as flat as possible when we could.
Yeah. Okay. That's it for now.
Okay. Any others? Commissioner Dial?
Not right now.
Okay.
Did we, I'm sorry, I have to do a moment of exercise. Did we have, go over this at all?
No.
Okay.
Very briefly.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I just went over this really quickly, and I did, one of the, I mean, I liked the trail, and I think that, I also applaud the amount of public input that you had for this. Really good idea to get a lot of that, give a chance for people to sink their teeth into this and ask all the questions and try to work out most of the things that, you know, come up in these kinds of plans. I looked through this packet that you gave me real quickly, and the one thing that jumped out at me was the BUDs Towing issue, and the trail bisecting the property there. And I was just wondering if we could work out a, I don't know if we can work it out tonight, we might have to maybe go back to the drawing board and take a look at that and see if we can find a way to circumvent that property. But, that's all I've really got at this point, and I would like to try to get moving on the public comments. We really, we have about eight people that want to comment, so I really do want to stick to the three-minute rule. If you have something in writing, give it to us, and then you can summarize what it is you have in writing in your three-minute conversation with us.
And Paul, that's why I asked you if you had gone over this, because I read the BUDs Towing, too.
Yeah, yeah. So, first up is Danielle Lekban?
Here's more.
Okay.
You got 10 now.
Oh, okay. So we've got some more. Perfect.
Is there anybody got a pad of paper?
I'm Danielle Lekban, a resident, a homeowner, a mom, and a teacher. And I live at 320 Tumwater Drive, which is right next to our friends at the Still House's property, that this proposed path is going to go right through his house and right in front of my home, or possibly even behind my home at this point, we don't know. I have a lot of questions, but basically, considerations of bike and pedestrian trail, safety for children, families, with bike and pedestrian safety. Is it going to be clearly marked, closing off Tumwater where the alleyway starts? Because we live at the very end of Tumwater Drive, and there is a bar, and there is his property, and we have people that are intoxicated on a daily basis that fly around that corner there, where the alleyway is at the end of Tumwater. What is going to stop an intoxicated person from hitting children and families? I'm wondering. That area is not closed off, so it, right now, it's an alleyway, and it, people are turning in that area hourly, daily and hourly. They come down our street, they turn around. I just had my car bashed into by a person, and then they, they left. So, this is, this is a daily occurrence.
Are you talking about the Tumwater alley that comes off of Second Street?
Yeah, because we live at the very end. We are right, we are the last property besides Mixed Place.
Okay.
We are the one that butts up against the rock wall and that has the green space behind it. And our home has been there forever. It's been my, my husband's family's home for 65 years.
Wow.
Yeah. And now we live there. People driving quickly around the corner from the bar area there, the view of the tavern. I view people leaving and coming and going at high rates in both directions. What is going to provide safety for the citizens using this trail? What is going to provide safety for my home, my family, my animals that I own, my dog, you know, getting hit? People double parked on busy days, people park illegally along the building, the gray warehouse building. They also park right in the right-of-way in front of part of his property as well. I have pictures that I've taken on a busy day and show you that the cars, there's nowhere for us to park as homeowners, but then there's also nowhere for the businesses to park. How are you going to add a bike trail through condensed, heavy parking area where people are drinking? You know, that's basically what I'm coming away with. So I can send you the pictures, I can email them to you, I can show them to you, they're on my iPad. And I, I do like the first choice, your temporary trail is fantastic. We are homeowners, we want to access the new Riverwalk, that's really cool. I'm excited if someday the mill opens up as a multi-use area with recreation and a place for people to visit, and a place for us to enjoy, and get to downtown, too, from our area. Again, I don't know if you guys want to see the pictures of our street.
Pretty good idea, but if you would email them to...
Sure.
Then she'll add to the record.
I'm assuming that we're holding the record open, that would be only if we would be holding the record open.
That's what I just, yeah.
It's your decision.
Yeah. And I have no idea.
I'd like to see, because I've never seen that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Be back. And Melissa Earlbaum. Melissa Earlbaum. Going once. Okay. She must have left. All right. Okay. Stephen, and I'm so good at butchering these names, Stephen Lyde.
Yeah, that's actually pretty good.
Okay, good. Thanks for coming.
So, you've already received our letter, but to kind of help assist the conversation, I've got a handout here. Sorry, did I approach?
Yeah, if you just give them to her, she'll pass them.
Yep. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you. My name is Stephen Lyde, I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Miller-Nash. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Bullock family, the owner of BUDs Towing. BUDs Towing has been a fixture in Oregon City since 1968 and is currently being run by the third generation. While the Bullock family supports the creation of a new trail in general, they object to the plan to run the trail directly through their property. While we appreciate the city's proposed condition of approval in response to our objection, we still believe that the proposed route is not satisfactory. Having not seen the condition, but having heard about it, it seems like it would be hard, if not impossible, to enforce. And while I very much like Ms. Reed, we spoke earlier, she's very nice, and you all seem very reasonable, when you put that kind of condition in the record, it's going to be enforced at some point in the future by someone that we don't know. And so it's really important that it's not just a matter of trust between us, but reduced to writing. So we've detailed our concerns and legal analysis about the proposed trail plan in a letter that we placed in the record. At this time, I just would like to hit a few of the key points. I've handed you a handout that I've made, and really, the part that we object to is the part that everybody's talking about, which is the extension of Tumwater Drive down through the properties, cutting over in front of the PGA substation, along McLaughlin Boulevard and old, into the old park. There are several negatives to this proposed route. First, as you heard, the portion along Highway 99 was the least favorite portion during the Greenway for the day. In fact, it was, people had pretty strong feelings about walking along Highway 99, as you might imagine. Now, I think the barricades will help, but you're still going to have the general feel of walking along Highway 99. And so, you know, we believe that a better alternative is going to be either the Riverwalk, kind of along the boardwalk, at least off of Highway 99 a little bit, or probably easier to do in the near future, is just taking the trail up High Street to South End Road. In reviewing the meeting minutes and a public comment by one member, it appeared that the group was split between two routes. The old Highway 99 segment that was proposed, and this alternative route up South End Road. It seems that the city and the group was influenced to propose the Highway 99 option in large part because of the perceived extra expense for running the trail up the South End Road. But the final feasibility and evaluation reports show that there's not a whole, there's not much of a difference between the Highway 99 and the South End Road alternative. It's tough to really compare the two routes, because what the group was considering was actually a route that went up South End Road and then cut over to the high trails versus the route in the feasibility report keeps going along South End Road to Fifth Avenue. And, you know, and perhaps that could be, one could be a bike path and one could be a trail in the future. But if you look at the details of the proposed Highway 99 route, it turns out that it could actually cost more than going up South End Road. And we believe that this is the case, because the current cost analysis doesn't include any funds for taking of private property. It seems to be an assumption of the city that as part of future development, they'll be able to exact this property, you know, it appears to be, you know, 15 to 20 feet wide perhaps, as a condition for approval. As we address in our letter, we believe this is a flawed assumption, because there isn't a nexus between the impact of the development and the desire for a trail. And the Supreme Court, the United States Supreme Court has held that there has to be both a nexus and proportionality of any exaction as a condition. So it's quite likely that the city will have to pay for the acquisition of this private property, which isn't accounted for in the cost estimates. In addition, this current route introduces uncertainty into the trail plan, because we don't know what these acquisition costs will be. It depends on what the fair market value of the property is at the time the property will be developed. And this is in addition to the uncertainty from PGE, who said that they won't give a permanent easement, they're only going to give a temporary license that can be revoked at any time. It seems like a risky use of public funds to build a trail on a license versus the other options, which would be more permanent in nature. So given these uncertain costs and the public's strong desire to avoid walking along Highway 99, it seems that this current route violates several of the project goals. For instance, two of the three goals are, well, the first one is to provide an attractive route of travel for people walking and biking between the promenade and the Children's Park. The third is to minimize risk and conflicts between automobile traffic, bicycle traffic, and pedestrians. It seems that a route along Highway 99 wouldn't qualify as attractive or avoiding this conflict. And more importantly, that we believe that this, as we address more fully in our letter, we believe that this violates some of the approval criteria.
Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and wrap it up.
Please do.
I appreciate it. So, we asked that you do one of two things. One is either amend the route to follow South End Road, at least for the temporary, with maybe a long-term plan for the Riverwalk, or that you send it back to the staff and the advisory group to sort of reconsider the alternatives with keeping in mind the actual costs of taking the private property.
Okay.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Paul, I would say I'd rather do a few hundred feet of 99 than 20 feet of South End.
Okay. Sean Dachler.
If I may, can I bring up somebody else that's also...
Of course.
Probably better use of your time.
Okay.
What was the name on this one?
Sean Dachler? I hope I got that right.
You did.
Okay, thanks.
This is Bill Trumbull, our VFW Post Commander. It'd be great if he could go first.
Welcome, gentlemen. Did you fill, Bill, did you fill out a?
Yes, I did.
Speaker's card? Okay, great. Got it right there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Perfect.
Good evening. I guess my concern is closing off our entranceway to the VFW Hall. That's our only access now to the hall. There's been talk about dropping a road down the stairway, which is, I don't know if you noticed, I can't even walk that stairway, I would rather drive it. But, that is our access, and that brings people in to the hall, which has been there since 1945. We got the property and built the hall in '48 to serve veterans and the community. And also, the parking lot is also used by not only the VFW Hall, overflow for the museum to come up and park when they're having events, and also, a lot of people park there to walk the promenade. So, we're just in, you know, our concern is to keep our access to the building open and to maintain our parking place, spots. That's our concern at this point. Thank you for your...
Fair enough.
So my name is Sean Dachler, I'm also a VFW Post member. I also sit on the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. I was involved in the Trails Master Plan, my name's, I think, on the second page, and the Parks Master Plan, and the...
the Parks Master Plan, and the update to the Parks Master Plan. My concern with this, along with Bill's, but more specifically, is how this is written into the plan. It's very specific, closing that and opening up the other. If either of Damon's other options are more feasible, neither are written into the plan if you were to adopt it that way tonight. The second part is, one of our VFW members was on that committee. When I first heard about the closure of that road, I went to him afterwards. I actually thought it was a, you had misspoke at the PRAC meeting when you said that. I thought, well, that's strange. They wouldn't close the driveway. So I went to Larry Mosley, who was on the committee, and I said, they're closing the driveway, and you were on the committee. How did they do that? He said, well, that's not what they're doing. So I've learned since then that several people in that committee are not familiar with the final outcome. So I'm not sure what's gone on in the process there, but there's a little bit of a flaw. The third concern is, this was printed or presented to the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee and to TAC. It's not required, but it's customary that those groups adopt this, usually unanimously since it's affecting their own plans. That has not taken place at a PRAC meeting, even though it's been presented, there's been no adoption or motion in favor. And from my understanding, that's also not occurred at the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting. So my recommendation tonight is to at least do nothing in moving this forward. Seems like in most of these park-related issues, everything's always a slam dunk. You never have a crowd of people with concern. So this, to me, tells me something's, something's kind of wrong, and I'm not sure quite what it is, but I think we need to take a step back and refine this a little more.
Well, at the very least, we've gotten quite a bit of information just at the last minute, so we'd need to probably wade through that as well, so.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Very much.
Paul Edgar.
Paul who?
Paul Edgar? Yeah. All right, all right, all right.
Thank you, Paul Edgar. I was a member of the committee. I was also a person who represents quite a bit of the interests of Kanema. And the Kanema neighborhood, virtually, more than unanimously, in all of the votes and the talks, really wanted another alternative. Like the attorney said, we were looking at another route that would go up. First of all, we wanted to come up off of Second Street to High Street, cut across High Street, because there's a light, there are going to be a new replacement light there, where it's going to be, it's a shorter distance, it's safe, and then go down the left-hand side of Second Street or whatever, Second Avenue, down to, down to the street, and then go down along the front. It's not beautiful, but that was to be the interim choice, not going down by the Still House. So we voted on that, and so somehow things got changed. I don't know how or why. But yet, at the same time, I think we should have a continuance of this hearing. I would really like to see formally ask for one, where in fact, all of the committees, including the Trails Committee, gets a chance to come back together, the TAC, the Parks and Rec. And I think that I enjoyed your comment about the bridge. I wish you were a part of the committee because that has promise. But what we really had looked at was going up and then cutting cross-country on a flat ground, all the way to the upper part of Old Kanema Trail. And then there's multiple routes where I could go up to High Street or up to Fifth Avenue, where there's property for sale right at Coffee Creek. And then, or we could go follow down and around. But we wanted to, most of Kanema residents all recognized the lack of safety on Fourth Avenue. And we said, why not take unimproved right-of-way, if you see Fifth Avenue up on your map, up above, we were going to go right across there on an unimproved route, and we could create the major section where there was danger of cars and traffic and people all mixing in 16 feet of right-of-way, paved right-of-way, and come up with some other solutions. Again, I just think we need a continuance, we need to really talk about it. None of the votes were clear, close. Everything was right on the edges. Nothing was defined to say, this is what we want, this is clear. Everybody was in agreement. And it just was that way. So I think we need to have a little bit more talking about it. I don't think it's ready for primetime. They're ready to be codified. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Jim Nacida.
Evening, Jim Nacida, 302 Bluff Street. I would also like to request a continuance and request that the record be kept open. I want to talk about two ends on this sketch, and I may, Kelly, if you could assist, I may ask you to get to a different map at some point, but let me, the first one I should need, because I think I can give people a sense of my comment. 302 Bluff Street, Bluff Street is actually not really a street. It's an asphalt path within the McLaughlin Promenade, and the promenade property goes right to my house line. In fact, it goes to all of our house lines there on the promenade. And, you know, pedestrians walk along by my house every day, so I kind of think I live on the trail, you know, already. But I'm very familiar, obviously, with the promenade in that area, and I want to, I don't know if this came up, I didn't participate in the committee, but I want to propose something that might be taken under consideration, that might help the VFW retain its driveway so there's no conflict with pedestrians. So I'm on Bluff Street, but there's also a South Bluff Street that doesn't show up on our maps, but does show up like on Google Maps or, you know, others. And if I recall correctly, it's basically where First Street goes past that water tank, and it kind of like bends immediately left. Yeah. Right. And I've.
And there's some stairs there.
What I would like to suggest is that you might take a look at one possible route on the landward side of the parking lot of the VFW. When I first moved to town, I was at one of those, you know, Earth Day weed pulls, and we pulled that area on the landward side of the VFW parking lot. And over the years, it has evolved into a path. It has evolved into a footpath. And it might be that it would be possible to kind of like shoot the path on the landward side of the parking lot, and then along South Bluff Street, on the landward side of the VFW, and then to Tom Water, right in front of the moot. What I know of that topography, because I'm at the moot a lot also, is that if you were to eyeball that, you wouldn't have much of a topography change, whereas, as you look at it now, you're going way down to the bottom of Tom Water, and then people have to come up that way. On South, on South First Street, there are some cottages, some of which actually front on South Bluff. It's kind of a gravel road right now, but it's city property. You know, we certainly want to let those folks know and let them have a say on any discussion on that, but I think that's one way to, you know, allow the VFW to keep its access and parking open. So the second one, I will need some help with, Kelly, if you could give a map that shows all of Kanema, including South End Road above Kanema. And I'm going to springboard a little bit on what Paul was talking about. I need property lines. I don't think you have it actually on any of your presentation. You'd have to go to the GIS online or something.
No, it doesn't have South End.
Oh, South End, right, okay.
It does, it does, yeah. So that's pretty good.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have what I need to talk about.
Okay.
I need South End above Kanema.
No.
We might just have to.
You can't get onto the city GIS, you can't get online?
Okay, we might have to use our imaginations, and I, we think we're running out of time.
Just do a quick little.
That's why.
Two minutes, sorry.
So let me try to do it with what you have. If you look at South End Road where it starts to curve, where it says in black writing, Fifth Avenue, and then there's two parallel lots there, and then behind those two parallel lots there, there's a big lot that kind of gets cut off the picture, all right? Now, adjacent to that, there are two more big lots that are even bigger. Now, when I was on commission with Doug, we bought one of those, and what we were thinking was, kind of what Paul was talking about, was that that part of Kanema, those big lots, would make a terrific ring from all the stuff that Metro is buying, and allow folks to walk on a trail and enjoy amenities like, you know, the Old Kanema Water Works, and then Coffee Creek, and then kind of hitch back to Fifth Avenue into Old Kanema Park. That could be done with a loop, with what you're considering now, but I think it could also be an alternative route that would kind of like keep people off of the traffic of Fourth Avenue for more safety purposes.
Okay. It sounds like, I don't know if you're a part of any of the communities or anything like that, but it sounds like it would be a good idea to plug into either the Parks and Rec Advisory Board or TAC and formulate.
Yeah.
Those, because those sound like good ideas.
If you're going to keep the record open, what I'll do is go back to the minutes of when we bought the property.
Yeah, that's likely, that's likely going to happen.
I'm just real quick, Jim, just to clarify. So you're saying you would, you would go into Kanema on Fifth, and then in one of those parallel tracks or something, in some way, connect to the bigger properties in the back, and then it's the OC Plumbing property that you bought, because I know that was the one I was like screaming needed to be added to the list, so. But yeah, that big.
We tried to buy that one.
But it's that, that you'd go in via Fifth as opposed to somehow dropping down off the bluff on South End, because that's like.
Correct, yes, you would go in, yeah. However, once you're in the neighborhood on Fifth.
Sure, yeah.
I'm wondering if it'd be possible, because of the slope, to kind of like cut a trail into the slope, because I don't know if that's public right-of-way that you wouldn't have to buy property for.
And then, real quick, on the VFW side, you're basic, I'm just imagining, you're basically saying, just before the property starts to drop down into the VFW, that then we would divert across the promenade to that, the South Bluffy area, and then down.
Kind of like on the leveled part, before the cement sidewalk starts its baby drop.
Right, okay. I just wanted, so you stay on grade, basically. Okay, thank you.
Perfect, great. Dr. Michael Seacor.
Thank you, and thank you for, I really applaud the committee for putting this together. I think it's a, it's a great idea, and there's a lot of need for this kind of a walkway and possibly bikeway in kind of the development of the waterfront, so. I'm Dr. Michael Seacor, I own the Highland Still House, so that's my prior, priority concern, is what we've tried to do over the last 11 years, really improving the south end of Oregon City and making a kind of a better place to come, hopefully. I'm co-owner also of the property at the end of Tom Water Drive, so that's adjacent to the Bud's Towing property. And as we, if we can go back to that other map, that would be great. I feel, I feel like we should have been involved somewhat sooner than getting a letter, and maybe I was negligent to not know this was all going on and watching the committee walk up and down the street and down the proposed River Walks, but I really feel like we should have been kind of asked before this to kind of like our input in this. Certainly, we bought this property with the idea of some kind of a development for the future, so certainly, you're right in that we're thinking about development, but it isn't necessarily just for a River Walk. So one of our concerns, just like the neighbors, is the way this was, this drawn on this Plan B, and the thought of it going right against the hillside, is that is our house. That's the old Ogden House that was built in the 1800s. And so you're kind of proposing that going straight down Tom Water, straight into that house. That's not to say that we wouldn't be necessarily against, if that was the route that kind of everybody settles on, something that would go between Falls View and us and the gray apartments, I guess they're not gray anymore. Certainly, there's issues from Bud's Towing as well with kind of bisecting property, but our plan was eventually to have some amount of parking, and it would be on that sort of edge of the property line between Falls View and, so it would be, it would be in keeping with this plan, possibly, to have, you know, a path that would actually go along with parking and things like that. I also agree that, I think there needs to be more input into the alternatives of these, the three best plans. The proposal of the change in the intersection and the crosswalk at Tom Water and Second, I think is brilliant. I've watched people get hit at that intersection. It's people, I watch every single morning, people run that stop sign off of Tom Water onto Second, going in both directions. It's just a free-flowing Boston sort of traffic pattern.
You've got to keep track of that.
Anybody who's ever been driving in Boston, they know, no, stop just as sort of a recommendation.
Suggestion.
So, so I do think that that is a great idea, just to slow that traffic pattern up. And I'm not sure, I think one of my other comments was just, we talked about closing that left-hand turn at Tom Water off 99. You know, we asked them to do that a long time ago, talked to ODOT when we were talking about traffic or parking issues from the museum and from the VFW and the Still House. And they had always given us the answer, of course, that it's an emergency route in case of traffic issues on 99.
Okay.
But, so I think that's just one of those issues. The bridge idea, I think, is brilliant, which I always kind of thought when Alice was mayor, that that's kind of, when we talked about trams and stuff, that was a great idea.
Stop tapping it up.
So just, those are kind of my thoughts, and I think that a lot more input could still be beneficial. So I, again, thank you very much for being here, and I look forward to maybe being more a part of this, so.
Fantastic. All right, thank you very much.
Start with fish and chips.
Doug Neely. Doug Neely.
That's Nessie's and chips.
Doug Neely wrote in the word in City. The thing I've heard, I've not heard anybody say they didn't want a trail through the system, and when I come to the closure, I want to point out something. The natural, Ms. Reed, Mrs. Reed did come to the Natural Resource Committee. We had actually supplied a letter in support of the grant, Metro grant, that resulted in this planning effort. I was also on this 20 group, but I fortunately could not meet the meeting where things were discussed and a final recommendation would be made. I think it'd be nice if the long-term trail recommendation was in fact on the boardwalk instead of on the other side of McLaughlin, I think it'd be a great idea. I would like to see the trail include Old Kanema Park, and that'll come to my broader aspect in terms of how important this trail is to us. in terms of how important this trail is to us. You got, we showed going to, we showed going to Canema Children's Park, but you have the Metro property, and the Metro property actually connects up with roads coming off of South End in our South End Concept Plan area. I don't think we've got any place where we have more public land available for a major trail system that we could work with than this particular one. And it would connect us to the end of the, end of the Oldham City in terms of South End. I think the general project is a great one. I think you'll need more than a continuance. I think it is necessary to go to the Parks and Recreation Committee since you've got two parks tied into it, if no, for no other reason, and, but, and I don't know how much additional funding would be required to look at some alternatives, but that seems to be an, an outcome of what this discussion's been about. But I've heard nobody say that we don't want that trail system.
Oh, yeah. No. Absolutely. Okay. That concludes the public testimony.
Or the list of people.
Or the list of people for this evening. It's clear that we do need to keep the record open. Is there somebody else that would like to speak?
Yes.
Okay, could you fill out a speaker slip?
I did.
Oh, you did? Okay, and your name, sir?
James Justice.
Okay, James, come on up. I, I apologize for, for skipping over you. Oh, there you are. Okay, all right. Very good.
So I own the property of 128 South McLoughlin next to Bud's Towing and adjacent to PGE, and in the interest of transparency, I'm in the process of working with the City of Oregon City to develop a parking lot next, which already was a parking lot, to pave it, has turned into a fairly large project, and I just want to say that Laura has been very open about and trying to help us get to where we need to be. There's a couple of issues that haven't been discussed. One is, I'm for alignment C on South End Road, and we own .40 acres, which is right against South End Road, which goes from Bud's Towing's property to PGE, which we have no intention of developing. And could, you could sidehill, once you got to Bud's Towing from there, and would align with the backside of PGE and come into Canema Park. The other issue is, that no one's talked about, is there is a, a water issue. There's a pipe that both Dell and Bud and myself have complained for 40 years, and no one can quite figure out where this pipe is connected to. Goes back to the days of Bill Parish, and we've talked to the city engineers and the city shops several times, so where they have their alignment, there's about, at certain times, there's 12 to 14 inches of water along that alignment, and it's some sort of an overflow pipe that when it rains really hard up on South End Road, then it comes rushing out of the wall. So.
So it's a water feature?
It's a water, it is.
That's great.
So, like I said, we're not, we're not, we'd be willing to, the other thing I'm worried about is liability, and I think that's why PGE did the, because you guys have the fortunate ability to have a liability cap. Property owners do not. So, we would be considered the second notice if anybody got hurt on there. So that's, that's an issue. So I think I'd, I'd be obliged to either do, you know, to deed that portion of that lot to the city.
Yeah, just to get your.
You can have a water feature for free. But there's enough of an angle there, and if you look on the alignment C, if she can pull that up there. And you see the PGE substation, you see the gray lot right there is there, so you come back, that, that's the lot right there. So you can begin the ascent on a sidehill on the other side of the concrete railing, which would give you a pedestrian safety barrier on through the back, and I don't know if PGE has some objections or not with going across the back of their property.
They do. That's the same idea.
Yeah. And we bypass Old Canema Park, too, which.
Well, he's saying you'd, you'd drop down and go behind PGE, on the bottom.
Got it, on the bottom of the bluff. Gotcha. All right.
Which makes sense, but PGE doesn't want us behind them.
Yeah, well, I spoke to the person from PGE, and they said they may be willing to look at that.
So that's, okay, it sounds like there's more discussion needed.
Yep. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Yeah. Okay, Commissioners?
Well, I would like to hear officially from PrAC and TAC, and then I'd like to maybe see what Kelly's proposed language was for assuring the, the property owners that it wasn't going to be a taking, that it was going to be, you know, some sort of mutual agreement upon redevelopment or whatever, with, you know, because the attorney had a good point. When we handshake here, we won't necessarily have a land use attorney who's willing to dig back 40-plus years in the records to find exactly the words. It may just be, eh, you know, whatever, too bad, that's, that's the law now, and we're gonna do it. So I think we need to have, really understand what the language is and get it as part of this, this thing. And I think with all the information we've got, and I'd kind of like to walk the property a little more and kind of see what the different, what South End is versus 99 and all that.
I'll go with you. Make it on a warm and sunny day.
Yeah, with a wheelchair.
It's gonna be a while.
I really would like to see it with you.
So, I, at the very least, I think we need to continue it until, and I, and I think it needs, until we can get input from PrAC and TAC, so I think we're looking at least a month, two months. I mean, this isn't necessarily a gotta get it done now thing, is it? Is there something on the line?
Just Kelly's baby.
Okay. Well done.
Yeah, okay. So we have, we have some dates to, to consider for, so clearly we need, no, but.
We. See what they're, what they're gonna want.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things. We can continue till December 11th and then just come back and, you know, maybe continue again. We just need to sort ourselves out for the moment.
Continue the discussion, yeah.
Or the next one is January 8th, because we're canceling December 25th.
Laura, what I would like to do also is, is identify the stakeholders here tonight and have them participate in, in the Parks, Parks and Rec advisory committee and TAC, so that they can, they can provide their input into those groups, and then those groups can, those two groups can come forward with us as, you know, for a, for a final recommendation, so that we can get all this worked out, because I'm not a huge fan of conditional zone changes or, or plans. So, I mean, I, I think that we could probably find a, a common ground for the optimal trail location, hopefully, and maybe we wouldn't need, or we would at least minimize the number of conditions.
Just miss your information.
You need to.
Come on up.
You know the rules.
Yeah, I do know the rules. Doug Neely, again, I just spoke to Sean, and he's on the PrAC as, as well as I am. December 7th is our next meeting, so between December 7th and December 11th, there probably won't be that much of a discussion at PrAC.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking, January.
Okay.
Yeah.
But even then, when, when does?
Can we think about like how we coordinate all those, because we have the, the groups' advisory committee, and then we have a lot of committees rolling around.
Right.
Because sometime, I mean, you could see that Kelly had went to NRC and PrAC and, I mean, all these groups, and sometimes things change or like new information comes out, so.
Absolutely.
You know, it's probably better for us to kind of think about how we can coordinate.
Yeah, and that's, and we didn't think for a second that you guys didn't do that. It's just, I think the, the way these things evolve sometimes, there's other ideas that come up, and there's other things that people didn't think about or whatever, and this is really, it's, it's why sometimes it's a good idea to do a public review draft, so that you kick something out for people to chew on and then come back and then.
Beta test.
And then they can give us, yeah, it is really, that's really what it is, and, but I know that's a lot of extra work and all that kind of stuff, but anyway.
Yeah, I think I'd want to push it at least to January and probably to February.
Could be.
Just because if we move to the January time, I don't think anybody else is going to have met in between.
If it's okay, can we stick with January 8, and then if we need to push it later, I just, then we'll have that flexibility and just in case.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, I don't think December's quick enough, or, or I don't think we can get it. Yeah, there we go. That's the word.
Yeah, that's the word.
So I move we continue LE 1702 to January 8.
Wait here a second.
Last second.
Okay.
And leaving the record open.
And then also, it's a, sorry to butt in, it's a legislative file, so it'll stay open.
Yep. Yep. Hold the record open.
Great.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it all. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Nay? Hider?
Okay.
Four ayes.
So, okay, the next agenda item is, I believe it's item 3D.
Hey, I almost had a 15-minute-long city commission meeting until the.
And this is a, this is a request for a continuance to the November 27, 2017 Planning Commission meeting.
Please be quiet. We're still having a meeting here.
Hold on, hold on, guys.
Go outside.
Voices down, please. Okay. Request for a continuance to the November 27, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, AN 1703, Annexation Z3, ZC 1703, Zone Change, TP 1707, Subdivision. The applicant is seeking approval for the annexation of a 6.33-acre parcel into the city limits of Oregon City. The site is within the Oregon City urban growth boundary and has a comprehensive plan designation of low-density residential. The applicant is.
Paul, can you take it outside, please?
Hold on. Outside, guys.
They can't hear.
They can't hear over the noise.
Hey, guys, outside.
I think they'll close their front way.
Okay.
Well, we need to hear ourselves.
It's gotta be correct.
And it's gotta get on the record.
Okay. The applicant is additionally seeking approval for a zone change from Clackamas County future urban 10-acre FU10 zone to our six, single-family dwelling district and a subdivision of 28 lots with one stormwater facility tract. So they are requesting a continuance to November 27th.
I move we approve the continuance. Or do we need to do something more?
Is there anybody that would like to speak to this first?
This is my first time at any of these, so.
Yes, come on up.
Do you want to do those disclosures, or do we?
Oh.
Just, just go ahead and have a seat, but just relax. We gotta, we're, we're kind of rushing this, which we shouldn't do, but.
Yeah, you know, I think it would be better if we just, we can hear the testimony and we'll take it, and then we'll do the disclosures next at the next hearing, because we don't have a staff report.
Right.
I mean, we don't have anything.
Right.
And so, I mean, to say you gotta, your testimony has to relate to the staff approval criteria, except for the staff report, doesn't really apply.
There is none. Yes.
So, we'll go ahead and take the testimony, we'll, you know, open the public record, we'll take the testimony, and we'll just leave the record, you know, the record's open right now, anyway.
Okay, so you're not the applicant, or you?
I'm the option right here. I'm just, I'm.
You're here to testify.
Because I'm right behind where the storm.
Okay, could I have your name and address for the record?
Well, just your name, and then we'll.
It's Misha Angel.
Name for the record.
Okay.
Misha Angel.
Thank you. Okay.
So, and I, I don't know, I, I came because I wanted to know what, you know, what are the options? Is this kind of a done deal, or are there any options for, you know, when I moved here, I love, I, I literally live on the other side of this little farmhouse, and I love it. They've got their chickens and cows, and it really makes me, that was one of the things that appealed to me when I purchased this home two years ago, and it, it makes me sad now to think that, you know, when I look outside, that there's not going to be a cute little farmhouse here anymore, and I, I don't want to, you know, have a problem with the family that wants to move on, who are very nice people, but I'm, I'm not really that thrilled that this is going to be turned into a whole great big subdivision. That's why I really love my home and chose that, because I can look out, you know, on the back and see the green.
You understand that properties within the urban growth boundary of any, any city are subject to future urbanization under whatever zoning designation that they get annexed into.
I really love the kind of mix of rural.
Yes. I, I get, I get that, and I love it, too.
And I, so I just, I guess I want to know, you know, can I make any input? Are there, are the plans that they've done, you know, finalized, you know, what?
Well, if I may, November 7th?
Yeah.
27th, sorry. November 27th, then we're gonna have the big meeting. There'll be a staff report come out on the 20th, and it'll say, here's, here's the plan, here's why the plan is good or bad, here's things that they have to do if they want to do their plan. They're called conditions of approval. A vast majority of them are pretty set in stone. You know, if they're gonna build a street, it has to be this wide. If they're gonna, you know, build a house, it has to be set back so far from the property lot, all that. So a large majority of that report is gonna be kind of set in stone.
And that's a bold, so, yeah.
Yeah. But there'll be other things that they might say, like, we want to put the stormwater facility in this location, and you, you know that there's a spring and it will be a bad location because it'll always be full of that water, not stormwater, whatever. That's where you can, you can give input. If the, you know, they're proposing an R6, which is very tight, but it's within the, the zoning of that zone. So if you have a reason why that's not a good idea, that isn't, I don't want five houses next to me, I'd be okay with two, but not five. We can't really control that, but if there's a reason, you know, the topography, the, you know, the endangered western thrush bottom, whatever, it lives there, whatever, then that's information that is useful to us. I don't like it, it won't, my property values will change, you know, that, that's not anything that, that we have control over. That's, you know, it is what it is. They own the property, that's within the rules of what they want to do with their property. So I would suggest take a look at the, what comes out on the 20th, and it'll be online, so you don't have to have like 500 pages.
Yeah, I just was going up at this, because that's.
That's all there is right now, so you're fine. So take a look at that and then see what all the different things are, and see if there's, you know, no, they're wrong about this, or, you know, if they just move this here, then it would be better, whatever. That's the sort of input that we can, we can work with.
Could I suggest for a moment with Laura's permission, that your contact, you can contact, I believe Christine has got this one, you, and I think her name should be on that paper there, and you can contact her, go down to the office, and she will talk to you and give you a better picture of what you can do, and you can be part of that staff report by giving the staff person what your thoughts are.
Okay.
And you can come back to the meeting when it's scheduled in, when did you say?
The 27th.
27th?
That's November.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so you can do a lot of homework and, and find out a little bit more than what we would be able to tell you here tonight, possibly.
Okay.
Sorry, it went so long.
I know. It was very important.
And, and, and we do value the, you know, the input of people. We're not just like, okay, we checked the box, so it isn't a problem. We listen, we, we do everything we can to, you know, synthesize your concerns, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're most welcome. Move we continue to.
No, no, no. Item, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right.
Move we continue to November 27, 2017.
A second.
Oh, you were supposed to say.
Okay, somebody else.
I'll get there one of these days.
Gotta be fast.
Are we?
All right, take the roll.
Are we ready for ayes?
Should we read Commissioner Giles?
Aye.
Commissioner Maybe.
Aye.
Commissioner SB.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
I don't know, maybe I should have stayed.
Okay, item six, communications.
Does that, do you want to know, is it the same time, 27th, like year?
Yeah. There's a little white card in the back of the room that says comments. If you could fill that out and give it to somebody here, then they'll also make sure you get notices of stuff that happens with this.
Thank you.
All right. A little bit of business. Planning Commission interviews are tentatively scheduled for December 11th. So, at this point, we don't have anything else scheduled for the. The commission, if you, do you mind meeting an hour earlier and starting interviews at 6:00?
Let's do that.
Or, okay. And then you may get out early if there's no other items or something like that. We'll figure that out. Okay, so we'll just set that for 6:00 PM, December 11th. We have one.
Good question about that. I was looking at the, at the website the other day, and I noticed that Bob Mahoney was, this, this says is his first term, but he was there and interviewed me the first time I came in.
Yeah, it's wrong. It's, it's, he did, he came in partially in somebody else's term, and then he was a full term.
Because I was wondering, because I thought he was there when I first came on, five years ago.
Good, good site. So I'm working with the city recorder to remedy some of that. So I'm working with the city recorder to remedy some of that, it, it's not exactly explicitly clear.
So how many terms are up at this point?
So you can't, so only, he's the only one that's up.
Oh, he's the only one.
And so he's reappplied as well, so he can be reappointed for the remainder. You get eight consecutive years, so when you come in on a partial term, you get the partial, the full, and then the rest of the partial. So we have about six applicants or so for that one open seat.
So it's a total of eight years?
Uh-huh. So it's normally two full terms, two four-year terms, but you can serve no more than consecutively eight years.
Okay, I'm just, go ahead.
For Planning Commission, it's different for the other boards, too.
Okay.
So this, then we'll schedule those interviews for 6:00 PM on December 11th, and then if there's items, we'll have that planning commission efforts. The thing is, lot averaging has come up as an issue. Commissioner Maybe's expressed concern about that, and actually, I think a lot of you have, most of you. As a side note, I've been doing check-ins with all the planning commissioners, so I've gone through most of them so far, but we're still continuing to schedule the rest. In all the check-ins really so far, I've heard concerns about lot averaging. Lot averaging has also been a concern for the city commission. City commission had a work session last week now, and at that work session, they directed staff to look at lot averaging, and so we're going to do a city commissioner work session in December on the 12th, and...
That's, both of us, that's the joint one?
Well, there's actually two.
Okay.
There's going to be a joint one about alternate mobility targets with you and the city commission, and then after that, they're meeting in their own work session, and that's going to be on their work session with a couple other items, too.
And that's December 12th?
Uh-huh.
Can I ask what time?
It's a Tuesday.
I know, they usually start at 5:30, I'm thinking my store is Christmas time.
I think yours starts at 5:30.
Yeah.
But I'll give you, I can send an email with some of those dates. And so we'll go look through sort of the history and intent and sort of ways to move forward, but we, it is very clearly heard a concern from the community regarding lot averaging and how it's applied, so we're looking into that as far as ways to move forward. Then the other thing is, city commission at the work session last week also discussed preliminary policy that would apply to all boards and committees, and there's two pieces to it. One is to change from our minutes that we do now to more of an action minutes. And then the second one is to set a policy for all boards and committees that you can only go till 10:00 PM, and then with 100% approval of the board, you can go till 11:00. We kind of have a similar policy that we had talked about earlier this year. That's all I have.
And what do action minutes look like?
It, it has who motioned, what everyone voted, and what the vote is for, and it skips a lot of the content.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Probably an introductory sentence about what the issue is.
So how would city commissioners or anybody else understand the conversation if there was...
They would watch the...
They would watch the video.
If they would, the last meeting, only two watched it, took the time to watch it, but...
That's available, though.